Okay. Call the meeting to order, the council's budget work session. I'd like to welcome all those who are with us here today, this beautiful, beautiful day in the city of Louisville. And I also want to recognize that we have two of our elected representatives that are going to be joining us in December, David Joyner and Saleh Andrews. Welcome and thank you for being here. And with that, I'm going to also take a roll call since Kevin is not here, so I'm going to say, Mayor Protim, are you here?
Here.
Mr. Reimark, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Barnett?
Here.
Waddell?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Spears?
I am here.
Okay, and the chair is here. And so with that, I will now turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Cawthorne. Mr. Cawthorne?
Morning, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Protim, and members of council. We appreciate you being here. Welcome home.
Thank you.
We want to remind council of the foresight that this showed in purchasing this property. Late this afternoon, you will have an update on where we are in terms of occupying this property. We have made tremendous strides over the course of the last 60 days, and we wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to meet in this room today and to be able to make it a part of the city's regular business. So we appreciate you being here. Those of you who are sitting on that side of the table will have to draw the blinds down if you can't keep your mind on the business, but we will endeavor to keep your interest today. Over the course of the past year, we have worked on values for the city, and we have worked on trying to coordinate all of our efforts around these four values: accountability, inclusion, collaboration, and creativity. We stand at a precipice, if you will, for this council and this city. The mayor asked me the other day, he said, what are you going to tell us on Friday? You're going to tell us we got no money? And yes, sir, we're going to tell you.
Recording in progress.
Yes, sir, we're going to tell you we have no money. Until we sell some property, we're going to have to have some austere times, but we're good. We're going to come through this very well. But the precipice on which we stand right now is the fact that you have a great opportunity with this city. You have a strategic plan that is going to come up for adoption in January. You have a CIP that will come up for adoption with your budget. Both of those are five-year planning documents. The staff is working on preparing a budget this year that includes departmental business plans that will go for three years. And then we are also working on rolling out, finally, the DNI roadmap that we were trying to get done last year, and weren't able to do that. And we're able to be able to follow up on these four values with some cultural change. So we have a unique opportunity, a truly unique opportunity with the FY25 budget to set the tone for this organization, for this community, for the next five years. And so I want to make sure that as you go through this process, not only today, but every other budget workshop that we have, I want you to keep in mind that you're setting the tone for the coming three to five-year opportunities. Doesn't mean that you won't change it. As Mike Tyson once said, "A plan's good up until the time you get hit in the mouth, and then it all changes." But the point is, we have a really great opportunity to chart the course of where we want to go. And so I just wanted to open this process with you and to remind you of that. And we will remind you of that as we go through the process, as we go into January, as we go into March's budget workshop, and as you were going through the adoption process. With that, we have a lot of information to give to you today. We're going to talk about the strategic plan. We're going to talk about the CIP. We're going to talk about the upcoming budget. But as with most of these initial budget kickoff sessions, we're going to start with a review of how we ended the last fiscal year and how that affects us going forward into FY25. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jennifer Moore. Ms. Moretti.
To get started, I just want to say I appreciate everybody being happy to be in this room. I like it's been set up beautifully. Compliment to whoever.
Well, we have Dawn Grantz to thank for that. She was the fireball that says, well, we did it at the airport. We certainly can do it here. And she's absolutely right, and we've done a really good job. She and the folks with communications and with IT have done a tremendous job in setting this up and getting it ready. We know we will get some criticism today, but just realize we're learning.
We're on the first floor.
Hi, good morning, Mayor and council members. This morning, we're going to review how we ended our fiscal year 2023 financials. The financial information that I am going to show you is still estimated at this point. We are working with our auditors to finalize our audit for fiscal year 2023. So you'll see on the slides, this is marked "un-audited" until we get that audit complete. We don't expect anything to change at this point. So before you right now is our major funds, our year-end unassigned fund balance, un-audited results. This is showing our four major enterprise funds and then our general fund. The first column is our amended budget, all the budget amendments we brought forward to council and where that was at the end, June 30, 2023. The next column has our revenues, what we actually received in revenues, and then what we actually received in expenses, and you can see how that came in comparison to what we had the budget for. The next column is fund balance change. So that is the difference between our actual revenues and our actual expenses. This is the impact to our total fund balance, the change from one year to the next with total fund balance. And then we have our unassigned fund balance. This is the portion that we talk the most about. This is like our savings account, what we have available to appropriate for those one-time non-recurring expenses throughout the year that come up unexpectedly. Finally, we have our percentage. This is our percent of our unassigned fund balance to our operating budget. With our policy, we do try to maintain a certain level of fund balance to keep the city in good financial management and stability. The recycling, I'm sorry, the stormwater and parking funds do have a higher percentage, and that is because they fund the capital projects. All of our stormwater capital projects and parking capital projects do come from your operating funds and transfer those funds over to those capital projects when those projects are adopted by council.
Cool.
Yes, sir.
Seeing that fund balance just reminds me of Hurricane. How Florence, are we still?
Yes, I have, yes. And you will see, if you will take note, the fund balance change, what you see there, again, that's for total fund balance. When we get to comparing our unassigned fund balance from one year to the next, you'll see that that does not measure the same impact on our unassigned fund balance. So keep that in mind.
Jennifer, we'll turn, it seems to be a pretty significant short call on the recycling and trash.
Yes, if you recall, we used fund balance from recycling and trash to pay for the nine automatic side loader trucks to get those in. So that was part of that. We'll go into discussing our enterprise fund revenues, the budget to actual. If you look at this, all of our actual revenues came in above what we budgeted, except for stormwater. Stormwater was actually only 20,000 less than budget. We did, our fees came in a little bit lower than what we had budgeted, but investment earnings came in much higher. So just to bring you up to date with the market changes, our total investment earnings for fiscal year '23 were $8 million. Compared to fiscal year '22, we received $320,000. So far this year, from July through October, we've received just under $4 million. So the increase in the rates in our investment strategies is really paying off for the city.
What rate are we getting? Do you know what the rate difference is?
We are up to getting about 5% right now on our investments. So starting, you know, a couple of years ago, you barely get any points or one. On this side, investment earnings, when the rates go up, it really benefits us. On our borrowing, not so much, but this side is really helping us out. Looking at our general fund revenues, budget to actual. For our budget is 129 million. We actually received 137, just under 137 million in actual revenues. So the revenue received exceeded budget by 7.9 million. You can see that the major sources of our revenue are property tax and sales tax. It's about 81% of our total revenues coming in for the general fund. For fiscal year '23, we received 1.2 million more in property tax revenue than what we budgeted and 2.2 million more in sales tax. As we've explained in every year, sales tax is such a hard revenue source to measure and project, and Laura will talk more about that in early this presentation. The other category that you see on here, where budget was 2%, and other actual is 4%, this is where our investment earnings come into this other category. So just in the general fund, we received 2.6 million. Other things in the other category are insurance reimbursements and sale of assets. Unrestricted revenue, that is our next highest revenue source. And of course, you'll believe this, but ABC revenue came in at 3.7 million. So we budgeted 2.3, and it came in at 3.7 million. Moving over to our expense side, looking at our enterprise funds expenses. All of the enterprise funds had less actual expenses than what we budgeted, came in under budget. For recycling and trash, actual expenses are lower by budget by 600,000. Of this amount, about 262 is from salary and benefits, where we continue to have some vacancies and turnover. For stormwater, actual expenses were lower by 1.3 million. And again, 588,000 of this is from laps and salaries and benefits. Parking expenses, 1.3 below budget. We had 950,000 in reserves for parking. That was partially related to a transfer we paid back to parking fund from the loan to the River Place. And then all expenses were 138,000 below budget.
Yes, sir. You may, this is probably jumping ahead just a little bit, but for recycling, trash going into next year's budget, do we anticipate, because of the purchase of those nine trucks, do we anticipate our costs going down, expenditures for recycling and trash due to kind of easy service, or will that take a few years to spread through?
I think, and Dave, to try to speak much to this, yeah, when we talk about bringing these ASL trucks and the side loaders, they take less personnel to operate. So because of that, you know, we might see some decrease in labor. But I know that we do use contracted services a lot because of the vacancy rate.
So it won't be drastic change in expenses.
Yeah, and it may, you know, be something that we'd have to wait a couple of years and then do, you know, multi-year comparisons.
Right. With less people on the truck, you would have better service because I know a lot of times routes get retarded because of lack of people on trucks. So that'll show up.
Yeah, and we actually, Dave Mayes was gracious enough to take EMT out there to the op center and do a tour of all of the different functions that they do. And they have quite a proud staff out there. I think I get the opportunity to go and talk with them, but they did demonstrate the side loader truck. And one of the things they brought up, which, you know, for me, I didn't, I never thought about, when you have the men on the back of the truck and they're hauling those recycled bins, they're really heavy. And so they may start off, you know, fast and moving them up, but as the day goes long, they're worn out and they're tired. And so with the ASL, you don't have that wear and tear on your staff, and so they are able to do it a lot quicker. So that was something interesting.
I will also jump in and say that these are automated trucks, and so there's potentially more maintenance to go along with them. But the key here is that we will not be relying on bodies, and we, which is where we are coming up short now, is being able to hire folks. So I'm not sure we'll see a significant decrease, but we will see an improved productivity because the trucks pick up more per day than the rear loaders, and we also can do it with less people.
How many, I know you mentioned we're short on staff there. How many jobs?
We won't lose, people will not lose their job as a result of this. It'll be an attrition kind of thing because we've already got vacancies in the department, and we're using temporary labor to do service on the back of the truck. As people gain additional experience as operators and being able to operate that truck, and believe me, it takes a little talent to operate that truck. I know now. But as they learn to do that, then they'll move up, and we won't have to rely, hopefully, on as much temporary labor. But we also still have the rear loaders. There are places where the side loader will not work because the right-of-way is too tight or whatever the case may be. So we'll still have rear loaders, but we will also have ASLs.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. Go ahead.
First of all, congratulations to y'all, but y'all actually listened. I was going to say, the realization of the savings will be from the temporary labor pool, and that will take a little bit of time to realize that fully. The other thing that this does is it provides career progression. Skills that it takes to run one of these trucks is a little bit higher than a regular packer, so we built in there a reclassification for some staff that want to move up within that job position at a higher level. And that's a way that we can actually enhance our recruitment as well. Just wanted to add that.
Okay. Looking at our general fund expenses, budget to actual. We were actually, came in under budget by 6.7 million. Of this amount for the general fund departments, 1.4 is related to salary and benefits. This chart is broken down into functions within the general fund. General government is city manager, more of our administrative departments. This was 3.6 million below budget. 850 of that was related to salary and benefits. For public safety, they came in 800,000 under budget. None of that is related to salary and benefits, although they have vacancies. For fire and police, we paid out over 250,000 in separation pay. So when people leave, we pay them out their vacation, and that comes from their salaries on a budget. Transportation, 850,000 below budget. Cultural recreation, 1.2 million below budget, 860,000 was from salary and benefits. Transit, that is the transfer to wave. We have budgeted 1.6 million that we transferred to. And then the other column, this is our lease debt service and transfers to other funds.
Jennifer, what was the difference, or the difference in the adjusted budget from the first general government?
3.6 million below budget.
And the majority of that, definitely.
Only 850,000 of that was related to salary and benefits. 2.3 was in operations for some differences in, you know, services. Of that amount, 1.4 is what we rolled over into this year. So how that works is any purchase orders or contracts that we have in these funds, because they're annual operating funds, when we roll those purchase orders over to continue that service into the next year, those funds get liquidated, and so they show up as available budget, and then they're encumbered again into the next year. So it shows that, you know, 3.6 million was under budget, but 1.4 of that is moved over into the next year.
This may be a Laura question, it's really just preference, but potentially for our next budget work session, we have 21 actuals as well, just to kind of help us to know where the progression was, especially for the couple of new councilmen relaxed coming on, to know it was helpful for me early on to be able to see where we were for a couple of years, year over year. So maybe in the next budget work session, having two years back would be helpful if it's not some struggle.
Yeah, no, we can pull that and just send it out to everyone. So this is showing our unassigned fund balance change from fiscal year '22 compared to fiscal year '23. This is where on the first term, I told you to keep in mind the change in total fund balance, because you can see on this that does not relate to the same change in unassigned fund balance. So you can see the differences from one year to the next. And again, that percentage is based on unassigned fund balance as a percentage of the operating budget. So our budget amount is different from one year to the next, so that may explain why you see, and for stormwater, 11 million, but the percentage is 84. 23, it's higher unassigned fund balance, but the percentage is lower. It's just a comparison to what that amended budget was. We get this figure one time a year, and that's at fiscal year end. So I show you this every year just to get, help you better understand total fund balance in comparison to unassigned fund balance. Total fund balance has five categories in it, and anything that's not included with the top four becomes our unassigned, so our savings account, so to speak. For the general fund, our total fund balance increased 2.3 million, but you can see our unassigned fund balance actually decreased 6.7 million. So the reason for this, if you look under the assigned category, subsequent year's expenditures for fiscal year '23, 8.5 million, was budgeted for fiscal year '24, and that was related to the purchase of this building and helping finance that. With the prior year, it was 1.23 million. So also in the restricted category, stabilization by state statute, this also changed. This is a requirement by the general statutes that we hold back any portion of our cash receipts. That's for other liabilities and encumbrances, et cetera. We've already obligated to pay those. We have to hold those back from our cash receipts.
That changed? What that?
On the stabilization by state statute. So if we take our total cash receipts for the year and we look at what do we have encumbrances that we're going to roll over, we have to hold those back because those are obligations we have, as well as any liabilities and the other payables, we have to pull back from that, and so that amount is what we have to restrict from.
Was that just? Was that just an increased amount in the state statute, or was that, is that?
No, it's based on our actual encumbrances and our actual liabilities. Those increased, what we had outstanding at the end of the year increased from the prior year. This just gives you a picture of 2011 to 2023, what our general fund, unassigned fund balance was. Fiscal year '19, that's when we pulled out to respond to Hurricane Florence, $34 million. Half of that came from the general fund because we did not want to take this to zero. We were able to pull from our debt service fund, knowing that the storm came in September, hoping that we would be able to get some reimbursements back from our debris removal. And we were able to do that. It came in right before the end of the year, we were able to pay back the debt service fund, but we're still waiting for funds in the general fund. But that is why that dipped down so much. 2011, we were still rebounding from the 2008, 2009 downturn in the economy, just as when we were starting to go back up. So do our capital balances. These are funds that accumulate when we close capital projects that have unrestricted funding remaining in them. So we'll come to council and transfer money from the general fund, or we budget to transfer cash over to these capital projects. When that project is done and completed and there's these funds left over, we move them over to cat balances to be available for other capital projects within those funds. When we look at projects that need additional funding or new projects that come up that were not planned, we always look at first other projects to see if there's available funding, then we'll come and see what the balances and cat balances prior to coming to council and asking to use any fund balance in the general fund. We try to keep that as our last resort. Moving into our convention center fund, this shows the five years to update you on the impact the pandemic had on this fund. The revenue sources for the convention center are room occupancy tax, net event revenues, as well as parking revenues to offset the operating expenses of the parking deck. Prior to COVID, we were seeing a healthy, growing fund balance in the convention center fund, and we were planning on paying back the general fund, the 2.1 million loan for the purchase of the property. When COVID hit, we were expecting, you know, all the hotels closed, the events center had to close. We were estimating we were going to lose about $5 million in fund balance in the convention center fund. So we did not, we postponed the repayment to the general fund. Since then, you can see we're starting to put, you know, get a lot more room occupancy tax in. We also moved 4.8 million of ARPA funds into the convention center fund to help us recap those revenue losses. So that's why you see the junk in fiscal year '22. We are now.
Quick question, and you said it, I'm sorry, but so the 2022 expenses were about 67% of revenue, and then 2023 expenses were 88% of revenue. What would change with the cost to run the convention center, or was that just because of some income payment?
The repairs to the convention center.
Gotcha.
We are still doing about $1 million of repairs for Hurricane Florence, and then there were other repairs that we had to do. So those are the six.
Those are all in FY23?
You'll recall that there were some significant roof failures, not only associated with the storm, but then also some shipment issues.
Thanks.
We have budgeted in the current year, fiscal year '24, to start repaying the general fund, and that is going to be paid out over five years. So we'll get the general fund paid out, paid back for this point. The next couple of slides are really just informational. Room occupancy tax, you can see the past four years here. This shows the impact of the room occupancy tax loss during the pandemic. March 2021, it looks much better. You can see, I believe, July of this, this past July was record room occupancy tax for us, and June came in real fast. This is just reminding everyone how the room occupancy tax distribution is done. Room occupancy tax is a total of 6%, and it's distributed from each of the communities in this manner. The general assembly gives the authorization to specific counties for specific uses on how you can use this, so it's not that we can decide to use these for other things.
But I just always want to make sure, so like outside of the convention center district, 60% of that first 3% of ROT collected for the city Wilmington is spent outside of the city Wilmington.
And yes.
I'm sorry, what, do we need a session offhand for that? I'm sorry, what's, do we need a section off hand for that?
I can get it for you.
First three percent is a local statue.
This is just showing that previous chart, but with the dollars in it. So you can see at the bottom what the actual amount per year was for each of those. So here we're talking about our emergency event financial impact. So we talked about Hurricane Florence that came in fiscal year nineteen, followed by the following year, Hurricane Dorian, and then Hurricane E C U S. So we are still working on a few projects for Hurricane Florence, which is why some of that eight point five million we have not received. But of that amount, we have four million of that is related to storm drainage. So coming back to our stormwater fund, a million of that is for the convention center repairs. Two million is related to their projects that we building facilities we have in our capital project for buildings coming back to there. And one point five million will come back to the general fund.
So would you mind going through that again?
Four million is is storm water for storm drainage repairs. One million is convention center repairs. Two million various building facility repairs. And one and a half million in the general fund.
Various building repairs.
Any of the art center, Thalian Hall, when we did those window repairs, any of that, we have a capital project for buildings. So we put it over there because it is a multi-year going over. Most of the general fund is related to administrative overtimes.
This is probably a question for Kara, but and with this eight and a half million, we've talked about it since I've been elected, I think probably before, obviously, since it started Florence. Have we contacted our federal delegation expressly for this to say, can you help?
It's not a matter of reimbursement. It's a matter of completing the work to be able to be reimbursed.
So it's hundred percent completion prior to prior reimbursement.
It just depends. It changed from storm to storm, but everything changes. But with some of this, so when they come in and they review our estimate, we have to give them, provide an estimate of what we think the damages are. And we write up separate project worksheets for each of them. They will approve those preliminary. When they obligate those funds, they actually send the, they pay seventy five percent. So they send that over to the state. The state has to do their review of the project. So they're, they hold the money until we are completed and they do their audit. So we are fortunate in North Carolina where the state does provide that additional twenty five percent. So some other states don't contribute, but North Carolina will reimburse us that other twenty five percent. But they do a very thorough review and depending on the amount of the project, if it's a large project, it goes through probably ten or eleven steps of review before it gets approved. So we did not receive any reimbursements for fiscal year twenty three, but this most recent August, we received thirty three thousand for Florence and thirty three thousand in E C U S. And we were told that we can expect more money in the next hundred and twenty days.
I don't know. It's a significant amount of money. I mean, we have kind of a timeline when we can't control a lot of those things you just talked about. But when can we get this to the point where we've done all we can do? Is that in the next year or are we still years away or what?
We do have, so we are given deadlines on when we can complete projects. And so some of them, we've had to ask for extensions quite a few times. The the one that we have that will probably be the last to complete is replacing the maintenance, the park maintenance building out at Wilson Park. That was an old house building that we were using. It was in a flood zone, so totally flooded out. There's been a lot of back and forth with the state and FEMA on where we can put the new building, what kind of building it can be. It's just been back and forth, but I do believe that they finally do have a plan that's been approved that they're working on. One of the other big things like for storm water, the four million, if you remember, we had a lot of point repairs throughout the city. So they have completed that. We've done our reconciliation and sent that to the state. So they're going back and forth. Another issue that we have when we're dealing with these hurricanes, FEMA, as you know, they they have contracted work that comes in. So a lot of times those people come in. We provide them everything, explanations. They leave, somebody else comes in, you're having to go through the same thing again. So it is, it's, it's just a very difficult process. Yeah, it's just, you know, with all the other storms that they're responding to as well. Committed number. They have a problem with staffing as well as everything else that's the last couple of years.
And it's not uncommon to see a major, I say a major hurricane, it's only level one, but a major event take at least five years to process through because you go through and you find damage. You report it as one thing, you go through and find it, damage is something else. You have to revise that, revise the estimates. It's not uncommon.
That is it for this one. I do want to go into update you on our
Last question, page ten. Here is. Yeah. Long as I'm bringing it up, then I'll see. Correct on this time. Like, there's a little bit of six thousand dollars, I think, left on golf. Any moves to get them Wi-Fi? I'm getting pounded for that. It's, they also talk about, oh, their computers go down and they, they're actually just have to give IOUs out to people to let them play. And we use that six grand to give them some Wi-Fi other?
I believe I T is working on, on helping.
Why is that so hard on real?
Well, it's the connectivity between downtown and their facilities, very low bandwidth. We have a plan coming up in the next few months with the purchase of P P D to replace our fiber, get higher speeds down there. So if they were to connect currently, it would be a lousy performance. So we can put Wi-Fi down there today, but the performance wouldn't be too great because we have very limited bandwidth. Because we have two employees in the point of sale system. It's all we have the bandwidth for right now. And if we add people on their, with their phones doing a lot more, it may slow down the workers doing what they need.
They were just asking for a closed one. It didn't sound like they wanted it for that. And they wanted it, maybe I'm wrong. And they wanted it for the sales. They don't want it for people, everybody just.
They just want it for the staff members.
Right.
I mean, we can certainly put one in there and
I'm like, what century is it? A decade or whatever.
We could certainly do it. And if it's slow, then, you know, it's going to be their staff only.
Right.
But I know there's some interest.
Let's have some conversation there.
We can do, you know, we keep it.
It's just embarrassing to answer that question. I'm gonna tell you, if I sent you Tony out there, you'll have to say, well, you know, you know, I don't know what he can say. So I hope we're working on that.
Yeah.
Short term and long term.
Yes, we have both in the plans. So if you want, we can go a short term approach just for the
Well, talk to the, talk to the management out there. That's what I understood. They weren't just trying to get everybody riding around, you know, on their phones. I mean, one day.
Yeah, we won't be out anywhere in the Gulf.
My point was it's just for business operations, for shops.
Okay.
I mean, it's not like it's a new facility.
No, no.
It looks pretty All right.
It looks nice, but we had the discussions more bandwidth issue of getting it.
Let's just stay after.
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay, I wanted to update you all on where we're at with our American Rescue Plan Act, our funding plan that we have got to counsel. The last update on this was probably this time last year. Just as a recap, the city of Wilmington received twenty five point nine million dollars in ARPA funds. This was divided into two separate distributions. We received half of this in June of two thousand twenty one and the second half in June of two thousand twenty two. We have a due date of December thirty one, twenty twenty four to have all of these funds obligated, meaning under contract or paid. We have to have all funds spent by December thirty one, twenty twenty six. We are not allowed to change any of the obligation for any of the funds passed December thirty one, twenty twenty four. So if something comes in and they're not going to use the fund, all of the funds that we had planned for that program, we have to pay those funds back. We're not able to, if we have another program that needs additional funds, we are not allowed to move those additional funds over to that project. Whatever it is, as of December thirty one, twenty twenty four, we cannot change.
Funds that haven't been spent but have been obligated prior to thirty one, twenty, December thirty one, twenty twenty four could be hypothetically.
Only within that obligation. So if we have a contract for, say, a hundred thousand dollars, that's the only contract that can spend those funds. We can't move it to another contract or another program.
Okay, if the, if the vendor or the recipient of the funds was to, something was to happen, that's
Yeah, the only thing we had an update, yeah, we had an update on this yesterday. The only thing that they will allow is if you have a contract on a project and you have to cancel that contract for, you know, they're not performing. You can re, you know, put another contract with another vendor, but you can't go above that amount that's remaining. So with all the costs increasing and everything, you cannot add additional funds, ARPA funds to that you have that amount that was obligated as of that date. And that's the only change that we can do.
So it's been obligated prior to December thirty one, twenty twenty four. As soon as it's obligated, that's the amount.
If we can change it up to December thirty one, twenty twenty four, but not past that.
So the, but the number, if something costs a hundred thousand dollars, we obligated it, we for some reason needed to change it, and then it was two hundred thousand dollars. This is all prior to December thirty one, twenty twenty four, we, we would
We can reprogram from something else and add to it. Yeah, but we just can't make any changes after December thirty one.
Hope everyone has lots and lots of strength.
We are required to report quarterly to the U S Treasury what funds have been spent and what eligible programs, as well as how we plan to spend the remaining funds. We also have to account for every dollar and provide supporting documentation and narratives on how the funds were used in relation to the eligible use. Funds that are not properly supported on eligible uses will have to be repaid. And we are open to audit by the Treasury's Office of Inspector General for five years following the end date. So through twenty thirty one, they can come in and audit, request supporting documentation to show how every dollar was spent in a particular program. And if we don't have that, we have to pay those funds back. And that's key because one of our programs, when I get to to the slide, I will elaborate on it a little bit more. So these are the three categories that the staff committee brought to council and how we were going to program these funds. So we had economic and community assistance with various changes that we brought to council. It's ten point seven million is going towards that. Seven point five million towards city and community infrastructure, and then our city response and recovery, seven point seven million, which part of that is the four point eight that we gave you. The next two slides in your book are the different programs for each of these three categories. So we it was, it's made a point to make sure that we were touching as many of our community programs as we could with these funds. So the programs in green that are highlighted in green are those that we have completed or near completion. The ones in blue are ones that we are currently working on, getting contracts out, getting additional information. So like Wilmington Tourism, they will be before council, the C V B will come before council in January and give an update and a recommendation on how to spend those funds with tourism related programs. With the business assistance, we did go into a program with New Hanover County to help award funding to businesses that were impacted in the community and together, a hundred and ninety businesses received funding from the city and county. The housing assistance, Gap Finance Starway, that is a big project, two hundred and seventy eight units of affordable housing. They received their approval from the local government commission this week with the bonds through Wilmington Housing Authority that council approved. So we are working with them, our legal department, as well as myself and Suzanne Rogers. I'm getting all the paperwork finalized for them to move forward with getting this project.
And which outreach program is that? Is that a new, is that contributing to what we're already doing or is that a common salary?
Oh, that is the program that we have our four, our police officers working with the county. Yes, so that's one point six million that the city is putting in towards that homeless outreach program.
And that contract can be amended because it's in blue, so it's currently in process.
Yeah, we're continuing to go through that. I think it started out as a pilot program. We have one point six in there.
Or that's how much we obligated?
That's how much we obligated towards this program with ARPA funds. And so that is something that, you know, because we're paying our staff, we'll be, we're reaching out to Donnie and his staff to go over that to make sure we're going to use all of those funds or if we need to reprogram them before December twenty four. I'm just based on what The one program I wanted to to note is the Arts Council Community Arts Program. So two hundred and ten thousand dollars went went to them. We have one of those agencies that received twenty thousand dollars that have not provided any documentation and I understand they are now out of business. That is the Ballet of Wilmington.
So we'll be responsible to pay that money back.
Yeah, we've, we've sent certified letters trying to see if it gets forwarded and if we can get something. The way that these programs work, we provided the funding to the Arts Council as our sub recipient. So they really are responsible for getting all that documentation and responsible for demonstrating how those funds were spent and providing the documentation to us. So they would essentially be responsible for paying that back to the city.
Is that twenty thousand reflected in the one hundred seventy thousand, nine hundred fifty eight dollars funding remaining that we're going to have to pay back?
No, no, because those are ARPA funds. We'll have to pay it back with general funds.
And for those, starting with affordable housing down through desert.
Yes.
It may just be my eyes, but there's a different color green than the ones at the top. Is that my imagination or are they different?
No.
In my, well, maybe not there, but
It may just be the printing.
Just wanted to make sure there was not some difference.
No, uh-uh. It's just green and blue. That's what my intent was. So maybe there's just more of the programs on your second page there. This is the status of where we are with our program funding. We have spent to date sixteen point six million. We have under contract two point two and six point eight are allocated to other programs that we are currently working on getting under contract. We have a hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred fifty eight dollars remaining from other programs that we weren't going to spend the funds on that we can reprogram. This is where those funds came from, just some changes on the city response side of those funds. And so we'll be working on updating and contacting the other providers with programs that we have out there to make sure if there's any other funds and then bring back to council a recommendation on how to reprogram these funds.
Um, I don't know. There'll be another opportunity to report. I just wanted my fellow councilmen of the future. We had a meeting of the, of the Legion Stadium Commission, I don't know, three weeks ago, somewhere around there. And you know, y'all, I'm sure everybody's gotten emails, calls about replacing the field. And it was passed due I don't know if anecdotal or proof, but they seem to be more injuries. And if there are any injuries, they're blamed on the field. So what came out of that was, and I was a little surprised, I thought it'd be in the summer, but Mr. Barfield was due in January. So you're talking six hundred and sixty thousand dollars?
Six hundred and ninety thousand total. That's with contingency.
And and we, we're a third of that is the way that formula has been working. So I don't know if we can even get a contractor by then. So I don't know, we can even get a contractor by then. I need to have any comment, help for that.
We, we have to competitively did the project. We recently, I think just as of yesterday, got specification approved by the purchasing office. The county commissioners have appropriation for consideration on their November twenty two. The school board, I believe their December fifth or sixth meeting, and staff would be asking the city council to consider it their first January meeting. We're currently looking at available funds that we can. Public funds. We don't know whether we'd be able to start orphanships before the spring season, but we did hear flat and clear that that was the desire of the Legion Stadium Commission. I actually think I saw it, you know, the coordinator, the staff, to talk about scheduling. If they're, they're scheduling schedule at other schools, if the city council does. Staff finds the money and it's a desire of the other government to do it this spring. Worst case scenario.
I think you'll find that they don't want to play elsewhere, so can't get it done in January, probably don't want to do it. But, um, I think any, these funds, is there any way to, that's the reason I brought it up at this point, was just there's a hundred and seventy thousand, any way to kind of navigate that for outdoor use? I don't know, you'll have to look into that.
When we're looking at the funding, and Amy did reach out to me the other day, I just haven't made contact after three times. So we can look at this, just make sure we have the federal provisions and your bids going out, because that's required.
As I, you know, all this was, I don't know if Jonathan had already spoken with Gray or not, but he was, they were gonna loan the money to the school. School, to the schools. So I, I don't know, but just, the public thinks it's January. So, you know, just. It wouldn't do.
Just as an aside, since we're talking about Legion Stadium and it's mainly the county that uses it and the school system uses it, and the city really, as far as I know, doesn't make great use of the facility, I guess, the pool in the summer, which we, the city runs and has the Y run it for us. It seems like perhaps down the road, we might consider taking that to the county so that we release ourselves from any obligation.
I, I've asked that question, Miss Sadie.
That is the dream. There, there was a grant applied for it by the city, I believe in nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty-ish, from the Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund. And when you receive and accept that grant award, it carries with it covenants and privileges. And that, one of those is that it must remain dedicated for a minimum fifty percent public use. And so I believe back in the early nineties, just before the Legion Stadium Commission was established, the city looked at transferring ownership back to the county or to the schools. And that grant covenant prohibited that. So that's the place where we have found ourselves in ever since. I think there's a, a very low possibility that it could be researched, that it could be done, but only if the city were to acquire a same-size acreage transferred to public use. And so the opportunities were obviously huge. An example being when the state extended Independence Boulevard past Empty Park. The state had to take a little slur of Empty Park, which also had the same grant on it. So there was a land swap where the city acquired a little piece of property off of Brexwell Boulevard that was the same size acres that was given up to the state. This just means, there isn't a lot. So it's difficult, it's difficult to do, it'd be very challenging. So that's the background on that.
When that was floated about turning it over to the county, Hoggard and Hanover both were using that facility. And the coaches and the staff screamed bloody murder, because they said it would never be maintained by the county the way the city would days. And that's the truth, and that's the truth. We go through this, new council members, new county commissioners, understanding the, the algebra on this thing is, it takes two or three meetings. Just, Margaret was on it a long time with me, Kevin's on it now. So the orientation is, but what I would suggest, and it's kind of a, you just have to think about, like, the foot, we obviously use the post plays on the baseball field. So that's a, you know, that's not New Hanover High School, the Sharks play on it. So that's a harder thing to kind of parse. But the football field, you know, we, I think you can, if we, we need to weigh whether maybe we can say, okay, you take over under this, under she's going, good luck. But a hundred percent, if we was just school, school stuff, just school stuff, nothing else, then we'd have a pretty good argument to say, y'all take care of the main, you know, the next time this field comes up, we're out. They always say, how many events do y'all have? You know, we're like twelve, you know, but, and there's, how many is out on that field? Two, three hundred, two hundred fifty six? So, so I, I don't know, would, I just thought we looked at, in my opinion, in the football with the field piece, the baseball is gonna be impossible, but you know, just replacing this turf and, and lock the locker room.
There's, yeah, there's a multi-million dollar, um, project.
Anyway, nothing like that.
Seems like when we got the soccer playing.
Can I, who, who, who is by the microphone? Because whatever noise you're making, it is killing my ear. I, I, please stop, whatever it is, can you stop?
I think it's Tony.
Yeah.
Please stop, Tony. It's, it's either Tony or Chad, but can you stop? I'm, I'm traveling and I got my ear buzz in, you're killing me.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you, please.
What does it sound like, Kevin? What does it sound like, Kevin?
It could be the ice down here, the.
It sounds, it sounds like somebody is constantly crumbling paper and banging on the table or whatever it is, it's, it's, it's distracted, it's.
Okay, 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 okay. All right, let's go ahead, all word, listen to it.
Okay, that is all that I have for you this morning. If you have any questions about what I've presented, please read John's, we'll provide you with additional. Thank you all.
Ms. Mortel has a guest she'd like to introduce for us, I believe.
I do. We have Professor Huthabe here from UNCW. We did a project with him for several years regarding the economic environment. We will be passing out his presentation, but I'm very thankful that he's here, so.
Thank you for having me. What I thought I would do is try to paint a picture about what's going on in the economy. The, the outlook has gotten foggier over the last six to twelve months because there is a lot that's going on. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna walk you through, just setting the stage nationally, talk about a couple of things that have been on everybody's mind, and then kind of zoom in on the region, and then talk about what I think potentially will happen over the next couple of years. Please feel free to interrupt, obviously, if you can ask any questions. To me, this picture really tells us quite a bit about, uh, uh, the, the national mindset. This is just the consumer CPI, and it's year over year. So it's showing you the rate at which prices have been increasing relative to the same month the previous year. And so basically, from January twenty twenty one to basically last month, prices had been increasing at a much faster rate than we had gotten used to over the last decade. And so the Federal Reserve obviously has been stuck with this problem that prices have been, have been increasing substantially, and unfortunately, they only have one lever to deal with inflation, and that lever is interest rates. So they've increased interest rates substantially. They, unfortunately for them, have not done a lot of damage to the economy because they've been fairly clear that they're on this single track of trying to beat inflation. They seem to be celebrated. I don't know if it's premature or not. The chairman of the Federal Reserve of Richmond was here a few weeks ago, presented, I presented alongside of him at the economic outlook. And he seems to be optimistic about the fact that they've tamed inflation. However, he did note that they're worried about what he referred to as these re-acceleration episodes, largely from global events, right? There are a couple of wars that are happening right now. We could find ourselves in a world where oil prices are a hundred and fifty dollars, which could put upward pressure on inflation, obviously. And so that's kind of, to me, the, the, the background of this. One of the things that's really interesting is that we consumers, as you all know, have not cooperated with the Fed's attempts to curb inflation. And what I mean by that is that we've continued to spend as though there is no tomorrow, and the labor market has held up remarkably well, right? And so this is the most forecasted recession that has yet to materialize, right? And so, and this is just a picture of mortgage rates, they're the highest in twenty-two years. And again, the, the thing that's surprising to me at least is that even in the face of these high mortgages and high interest rates, the labor market again has held up well, the housing market has held up surprisingly well. I'll show you in a little bit that housing prices in the region are still making all-time highs, even though volume has come down quite a bit. And so, again, there is a lot to unpack here, and I'm just showing you the slide to tell you that a lot of economists have egg on their faces because they've been forecasting a recession for a year and a half, and it hasn't materialized. And I really think that the reason it hasn't materialized is because of excess savings that a lot of us accumulated over the pandemic. This is the very first time where most consumers came out of a recession, a pandemic recession, better off financially than they went into it. And so a lot of the spending that we're seeing, and we have a front seat to this, right? And so for a, a previous presentation, I went to this website called Concert Archives. There were eighty concerts in Wilmington alone between June and September, right? And so, and obviously with beneficiaries for a lot of the spending, but to me, it's driving this big story. There are now trickles, if you will, of maybe decline in economic activity. Walmart reported earnings yesterday, and they said that they're disappointed in consumer spending. Walmart typically is what people trade down to whenever they're feeling their pockets are potentially getting a little bit light. But if they're reporting declines, maybe this is just not being reflected in the data yet. But, yeah, sorry.
First slide, you have to go back to, but.
Yeah.
But you're arguing a lot about year-over-year versus cumulative. What, force that.
Yeah, so, so I guess the, the, one of the things that's important to, to understand, as I'm sure you do, is the fact that the inflation rate is coming down does not mean that current prices are below prices in twenty nineteen or twenty. Prices today are still much, much higher than they were pre-pandemic, right? And so it's just that the rate of increase has started to come down. But to be clear, prices always increase, right? And so the question that I think about a lot is, are wages keeping up with the rate of increase of prices? This is perhaps surprising, but in the region at least, they've actually gone up on average faster than inflation. So one of the reasons why a lot of communities are doing well is because purchasing power is actually higher today than it was pre-pandemic. Because, for example, and I'll talk specifically about Wilmington, we have obviously a fairly large share of leisure and hospitality-type jobs. Those were sectors that experienced severe shortages during the pandemic, and employers had to hike wages. And those wage increases have actually gone up faster than the, the inflation. But there is no doubt that prices are much, much higher today.
So like when you have a cumulative effect of all this that's happened in the last couple of years, and then you used to see, I drive up a lot, and you'll just go to Sheetz, and they'll say, we're eighteen ninety-nine an hour or something. We work at Sheetz, and you're going, holy cow. And over time, that cumulative effect stays the same, but those wages might shrink back down to twelve. And then all of a sudden, everybody's poor.
There is, there is no, one of the biggest questions over the next couple of years is, and I, and I mentioned this, is inflation is moderating, but the wage gains are obviously gonna start to disappear as the shortages obviously go away. And if we do experience a slowdown, a recession or anything, then clearly employers are no longer gonna be willing to give some of these wages. So, so you're absolutely right, that's a really big concern in the background is how robust are the wage gains gonna be going forward? And to what extent will they keep up with inflation, especially if we do, so everything you said is right, but especially if we do experience this re-acceleration. The labor market is not in the same position that it was two years ago, which means that the, the supermarket or the gas station is not all of a sudden gonna start offering, you know, twenty-five dollar an hour. So, so, yeah, I think that that's a valid point. So this is, one of the things I like to think about here is, how are we doing, right? And so we can talk to, to people, and they say, you can paint a really negative picture of the economy, or you can say, look, unemployment rate is really low. People's finances are still strong, and I like to look at delinquency rates, right? And so, and, and I, I'm showing you delinquency rates here because to me, it's an important metric to think about. There, there are two things happening here. One is that we just now got to delinquency rates that are higher than pre-pandemic levels, right? But they're still much, much lower to the delinquency rates that we, for example, saw during the Great Recession. So a lot of people, for example, like to make these comparisons of, well, maybe the economy is weakening really fast, and we're gonna experience this very significant economic decline. I don't think that we have a recipe for that because, again, I come back to this point that the consumer is doing reasonably well, and I think that this confirms it. However, the thing that's important to remember again is that, to me, there is this slow deterioration in financial health, right? And so, because we're drawing down our excess savings. And when, when I say excess savings, this is how much more in savings we have today relative to how much we would have had had the pandemic not happened, right? Because of fiscal support, because of us not being cooped up for two years, we accumulated a ton of savings, and we're drawing those down. However, and I'll show you this in a second, we're just not saving any money right now, right? So it's money in, money out, sorry.
What approximately, what date did you see that jigger start?
So that started basically towards the latter part of twenty twenty one, right? So once, once the economy started to reopen and people started spending money again, we did see this kind of stress start to increase, yeah. And then this is the point that I was making a second ago. This is the savings rate. This is how much are we actually saving out of our income, right? And so the share of money that's being saved out of income, and as you can see, it's at a really, really low rate. There are those two big spikes, that's the fiscal stimulus, right? And so, but again, it was money in, money out. And now essentially, most people, partially because of inflation, are living, I don't want to say paycheck to paycheck, but they're not putting a lot of money aside. And this is kind of part of this concern about this kind of slow deterioration of that. And then this is the, these are the, the slides that break my brain a little bit, and some of you may have insight on this. But there is this disconnect between consumer sentiment and consumer spending, right? And so the University of Michigan puts out, the survey has been put in their act for years, and they ask people, how are you feeling about your pocketbooks? How are you feeling about state economy? How are you feeling about the national economy? And consumer sentiment has been very, very negative. As you can see there, it's increased or it's improved slightly recently, but it's still at the levels that it was during the Great Recession, which makes no sense, right? And so, again, if you were to think about the health of the economy, the economy is largely healthy, and yet people seem to be uncomfortable with their own financial health and with the state of the, so this, somebody was saying that this could potentially be explained because although people are getting raises and their wages are increasing, they're viewing those wage gains as earned, they're viewing inflation as a policy failure. And so they're just uncomfortable with the state of the economy, even though a lot of the metrics that we track are very strong. But the thing that I was mentioning a second ago, and this is the part that doesn't make sense, is look at consumer sentiment, and it's slow. And then we're doing retail there still, right? And so, and, and again, I used to joke that this is revenge spending and revenge traveling, and we obviously have been beneficiaries of that because a lot of that revenge spending is being done here. The question again about the health of the national economy is, how much runway is there enough, right? And so clearly, if we're exhausting these excess reserves, then spending is eventually gonna come down, and that's what the Fed had been watching very careful, is they felt like they were making progress because consumer balance sheets were slowly deteriorating, which means spending would come down, which would mean that there would be less pressure on inflation, right? And so we would pull back and start spending a little bit less. But clearly, there are consequences to the coins and spending. But clearly there are consequences to the coins and spending because that would mean the economy would weaken, right? And so that's kind of the dance that they're playing is how much pressure should they put on the consumer in order to get them to decrease spending? If the consumer decreases spending, the health of the economy worsens. And can you execute the elusive soft landing, right? Bring down inflation without hurting the economy too much?
You need a sociologist for the first, for the first slide. I mean, sentiment can be just made of wars and
Absolutely, absolutely.
Just fun, it's funny.
There is no doubt about it. And, and there's been people, and, and again, there is a political component to that, right, as well? And there is how uncomfortable, what TV are you watching? And whether or not there is a lot of uncertainty about the, the state of the world, right? And so, so you, you're absolutely right, but the, the point I'm making is it's inconsistent with the, the overall health of the economy, but, but there is no doubt that you're correct. So I, I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about the national economy. And now I'm going to tell you what I'm about to tell you in case you lose interest. So one of the things that I track and that I pay attention to a lot, and, and everybody in this room knows this, is that the area has been a significant beneficiary of in-migration. And one of the things that's stunning is that between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, there's been an injection to the region of almost a billion dollars through migration alone. Meaning the income of individuals that have moved in has exceeded the income of people that have moved out by a billion dollars. And I'll break down those statistics for you. And, and when I say the region, I'm combining here Brunswick, Hender and New Hanover County. And I'll show you the breakdown a little bit. The, the previous presentation touched on this a little bit. I think about occupancy tax. I think about visitation activity as again, given us a good sense of the spending. And we've been at the forefront or we've had a great seat to see how the consumer is behaving and we've clearly benefited from that. But the thing I'm struggling with is how do you forecast consumer spending for this upcoming summer, right? And so, and to what extent will that trickle down to economic activity here? If this runway that I've been referring to is nearing the end. And then the labor market in the region has been very healthy, but we are experiencing deceleration, right? And so I'm not forecasting a recession, but, but there is very clear evidence that the rate of growth has slowed down, right? And so, and again, we can't be prisoners to the last couple of years where we've experienced this explosive growth because obviously it's very tough to maintain that rate of growth, yeah.
So this, this, this statement will likely see our first down year since twenty twenty and twenty twenty-four regionally here.
Yeah, yeah.
Tri-county region.
Yeah, yeah. I, I'll, I'll show you why I think that that's potentially the case. And then the, the housing market obviously has been a, a puzzling part of the economy because we're basically experiencing a freeze, right? And so neither buyers nor sellers feel like that it's a great environment. Sellers obviously don't want to sell because they don't want to trade a two percent for a eight percent mortgage. And buyers obviously don't want to buy because they don't want to pay three thousand dollars for a three hundred thousand dollar home. And so it's basically frozen. But the thing that's perhaps again surprising is that even though inventories have come down, even though days on the market have gone up, prices have remained elevated. We're actually still making all-time highs. And I'll show you statistics in a little bit. But, and, and in addition to that, I don't have the slide up here, but Zillow just, they, they just released a forecast, a twelve-month ahead forecast. And I broke it down by region. And they're basically forecasting that housing prices are going to go up in almost every community of North Carolina by between one and three percent, right? And so, and again, the, the path of housing prices is dependent on interest rates and a lot of other things. But it's important to, to keep that in mind. And then the last point is the one that we were talking about, which is that inflation is moderating, but wage gains are as well, right? And so, and that's something that's
In our area, I don't know, it's maybe outside of your purview, but the, uh, the generational trends, you know, like the, the boomers or whoever, you know, the retirement, that, that wealth buying moving to Brunswick County or buying, moving to the beaches. Where are we in that?
So
That curve?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll show it to you here in a little bit. Brunswick County and New Hanover County and Pender County would have shrunk had it not been for migration. And so what does that mean? That means that births are lower than deaths, right? And the area is getting old very, very fast, right? So Brunswick County right now is the oldest county in the state. The median age in Brunswick County is fifty-seven. And it's increased very, very fast over the last decade, right? Largely because of migration. New Hanover's median age is forty-one, but the state is getting old. And I'll, I'll mention this. So again, you typically, when you think about a, a healthy pyramid, you think about a pyramid, right? And so Brunswick County looks like a reverse pyramid, right? And so we look a little bit like a rectangle, right? So we have a little bit of a bulge because of the university. But a lot of the younger people that are moving here are not having kids at the same rate that we're getting, right? And so, so all of the growth is coming from migration. And the migratory trends are coming from older people, some remote workers for whom we don't have great information, so.
Is it crazy to think that at some point that, that comes down enough to where that housing becomes our affordable house? Or more, not affordable, but
So, so I've had, I've had the version of this conversation before and somebody was saying, but, but I'm assuming a lot of those people that own those homes have kids or grandkids, so it's not that that housing is just going to, so, so the, the question that I think about, then maybe
They're working in Charlotte and Richmond.
Yeah, no, no, but I mean, there, there is a possibility of that happening, but you have to think about the desirability of the region. And so what I think about a lot, and this doesn't answer your question directly, is can we expect the migratory trends that we've seen over the last few years to potentially start decelerating? So why would they decelerate? Either because the baby boomers start dying off. Or there is this point of affordability gap, what I think about, which is Wilmington has had this value proposition that it's much cheaper than New Jersey or New York or, you know, pick the place. But if we're growing at a rate that exceeds, right? And so that shrinks, then that means the would-be migrant is maybe picking Bertle Beach or, you know, whatever other county is, so, but I'm an economist, I have to give you on the other hand, the rate of growth in housing prices, even though we feel that it's been incredibly high, is actually not higher than the places from which we're getting migrants. So at least for now, the affordability, yeah, exactly, the affordability gap has not disappeared. But the point about the long-term trend is certainly important, right? And so, and this is an economic development question. If the economic engine right now is through migration, it's clearly not a sustainable model, right? And so there needs to be this attempt to think about alternative economic engines, yeah. So just quickly, in-migration robust, labor market resilient, consumer insatiable till we run out of money, I suppose. And then the, the housing market is in a standoff, right? And so, and, and again, the, the last bullet point is this is an attempt to, and, and everybody in this room knows this, but I think that there is a lot of attempts to think that the party is going to continue and the last couple of years are potentially reflective of the future. But they're aberrations, right? Because the consumer has had so much money. I like maps and I like to make them in my free time. And so I think that this is a really important map that tells the story that we've been talking about. So the scale goes from dark to light. Light color shows you big numbers. So I'm just going to tell you, again, we're talking about the region. That tells you that Brunswick County grew by twelve percent, fastest county, fastest growth in the state. We grew by four percent, Pender grew by nine percent between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two. Now, that's obviously massively important because these people didn't just move here, they also brought their incomes here, right? And so, and one of the things, I, I was presented to the Leland Council last night and I was trying to explain to them that when we think about an economy, we think about the labor market and we think about wage and salary workers. But because of this migration, a non-negligible part of the economy now is made up of federal transfers, social security transfers, retirement funds, dividends and interest. And the economy now or the purchasing power of spending is no longer just dependent on the jobs that exist in the region. It's also all of this money that's flowing from outside. And so that's fueling demand for goods and services, that's fueling demand for breweries and restaurants. That's why every fancy restaurant is busy on a Tuesday, right? And so because there is a lot of this money that's coming in and that demand is not just from the people who are employed in the region. And I think that that's an important track. And this is, that, to me, this is one of the most important pictures that tells the story about demographics, right? And so natural increase here is just the difference between births and deaths, right? So it basically tells you what is the difference between births and deaths? And that's the, the, the green bar and it, and it shows that it's negative in all three counties. Now what does that mean? That there have been fewer births than there were deaths? Now, absent migration again, all three counties would have shrunk. The moment you add migration, you see this explosive growth that we've experienced. Now, where are these people coming from? This may surprise some of you, but two-thirds of the in-migrants into New Hanover County actually came from other counties within the state. And then one-third are coming from these states here. And so this gives you a sense of again, where we're pulling people from. This is IRS data, by the way. This is showing, so the IRS shows you inflows and outflows at the county level. And it shows you the income of these individuals, average gross income of these individuals. And that's the point that I'm, that's the, the next slide that I'm going to show you. The income of the in-migrants exceeds the income of the out-migrants, yes.
Coastal communities nationwide, you know, I've said it, coastal communities nationwide see like in-state migrations like, like we did.
Yeah, so, so the, the migration over the last couple of years has been a sunbelt coastal migration, right? And so, so the, the, the shift in population has been moving south and it's been moving towards the coast, right? And so, and that's, so the beneficiaries are obviously in South Carolina, you're in North Carolina, you're in Florida. But, but there's been movement both within state towards the coast and obviously from some of these places, so yeah. Yeah, so that's, that's important. And, and this is the part that I think matters a lot again in terms of just trying to wrap our heads around what does this mean? And, and I'm just going to pick New Hanover County there. So if you were to take the income, the average gross income of the in-migrants and remove from it the average gross income of the out-migrants, you see that there's been in New Hanover County, an addition of two hundred and eighty million dollars. Now, take that two hundred and eighty million dollars and divide it by the income of people that didn't move, that's a jump of three and a half percent of income, right? And so that's why again, to me, this is incredibly important to understand because that means that the purchasing power, the spending behavior, demand for housing is no longer just a function of again, activity that's happening within the region. It's a lot of these inflows of dollars that are changing consumption patterns. And I'll, I'll just pivot to the labor market and the labor market is obviously something that we think about a lot. Just quickly, we currently, so this is Wilmington Metro and this is pre-inclusion of Brunswick. It has today, so the Wilmington Metro today has about ten thousand more jobs than we did in twenty nineteen, right? So that's the, the important thing is we are, and that line that you see is just a trend line. So it basically tells you that we've essentially absorbed COVID losses and we've continued to grow. And we've actually added more jobs than we've lost clearly. And there are, like I said, about ten thousand more jobs today than there were pre-COVID. The thing that's interesting however, and this is the deceleration point that I was making a little while ago. So this is rate of growth relative to the same month the previous year. So the January bar tells you between January twenty twenty-three and January twenty twenty-two, employment grew by five point three percent. And then as we get closer and closer to now, the rate of growth slows quite a bit. Now, and some of you may have insight on this. It's largely because of two sectors. And those two sectors are professional and business services and leisure and hospitality. Now, the, we're sitting, it's interesting that we're sitting in this building and some of you may have insight. And I've speculated and I don't know the answer. So this is the breakdown between August twenty twenty-two and August twenty twenty-three. The two sectors that are losing jobs are professional and business services and leisure and hospitality. The drop in professional and business services basically mirrors the gain in education and health services. And one of the things that I've speculated about, and if you have insight, please tell me, is that a lot of PPD employment was classified as professional and business services because they did contracting work. And a lot of thermofisher employment is classified as healthcare services. And so when you look at those two bars, it almost looks like this is a classification issue, meaning but one of the questions is that the gains in education and healthcare services are lower than the losses in professional and business services. And again, this is speculative. I don't know how many remote workers thermofisher have and whether that potentially explains this loss in employment. And that's kind of the, the background of this. The other thing that's worth noting here is that the drop in leisure and hospitality potentially points to this decline in spending that I've been, so that's the sector that's been growing incredibly fast over the last couple of years. But it seems to be decelerating again. Again, when you add up all of these numbers, it basically shows that we're adding a hundred or two hundred jobs. As I've shown you, September preliminary numbers shows a very slight increase. So, so there is evidence that the, the rate of growth is not going to be as robust as the last couple of years. But that again, to me is not surprising because we've been significant beneficiaries of this healthy spending and that's clearly unsustainable. I know you probably can't see this well, but it's, I, I, I like this chart. So green is good, pink is bad, I should say teal or the university is going to fire. Pink is bad. And that shows you rate of growth year over year by sector, right? And so, so again, if you look at, one of the things to me, like that's important, you don't have to think about the numbers, those, the percentage change in employment, is you can see that the rate of growth is basically slowing, right? And so that's the, to me, that's the big takeaway. There are a lot of sectors that are still green or teal, but the rate of growth has slowed, which means again, it does appear that people are starting to pull back a little bit. And the two sectors that have turned negative are those two sectors that I mentioned a little while ago. And this is why in that first bullet, I mentioned that I think we have quite a bit of evidence that this year is going to look a little bit different than the previous couple of years, yeah.
Was the construction decline in, in, in employment, is that surprising to you with the rate of?
Well, I mean, it, it's again, so the, the, so this is, I, I don't want to say it's artificial, but it's partially artificial because the growth in the last couple of years have been so big, right? And so, so that, so that, those numbers are comparing, for example, this August to last August, right? So it doesn't mean that it's losing jobs, it just means that it's not growing at the same rate. And as, I mean, again, when you look around town, a lot of projects are nearing completion or, you know, they've been ongoing for a little while, right? And so, yeah.
Going back to where you all started and this is what the Fed wants.
Absolutely, right?
By wrong.
No, no, but, 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 but that, that's, and, and we're seeing this play out, right? And so, and I, and I told this to, uh, 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 the, the, the chairman of, of the Richmond Fed, I said, maybe we're, we're, because, because of how we're positioned and because of our access to so much consumer spending, we're actually seeing, you know, these attempts play out because we've seen the consumer maybe start to pull back a little bit. They haven't broken the labor market broadly speaking, but it does appear that this is starting to make a dent. The question again now is, you know, how long is this mini slowdown? And to what extent does it, coming back to the migration question. One of the things I think about is there is very strong evidence academically at least that high interest rates dissuade migration. So will that potentially translate in fewer in migrants and how does that play into this, this picture going forward?
Well, should, um, actually very surprised with the number of, from twenty nineteen to today,
Yeah.
Ten thousand jobs
Yep.
That have been created in this area.
Yep.
How does that translate into housing? Because with the amount of apartments that have been built, I would imagine you have done some sort of research to determine if the job is created, obviously the service has to be delivered regards to housing, pharmacies, grocery stores and the like. Does it coincide or is it because, it's interesting because we, we tout jobs, but we vilify construction? Do y'all do correlation so people will understand this? Because I, I'm just curious, I, I can't understand, you know, you've got ten thousand people build these jobs. Where do you put them? What kind of services are they going to want?
Yeah.
Tell me.
Well, they have families.
And they have families and all that. So, so we're dealing with the whole issue here besides just the growth of jobs.
Somebody mentioned affordability earlier, right? To, to me, like supply of housing is fundamental to this story, right? You can't have, we were talking about relative attractiveness of the area. The relative attractiveness of the area is contingent on how affordable it remains, especially to the individuals who fill a lot of these jobs that are not very high-paying jobs, a lot of them. And the way you fix that is through the supply of housing, right? And so to me, one of the, the barriers to growth going forward is supply slash affordability. How do you fix affordability through supply, right? And so that's, that, to me, like again, zoning constraints or restrictions on building of any kind are a big detriment to growth, right? And so we And so we, we've seen growth in, in housing. Now, the question again is, is there a mismatch between the types of jobs and stuff that's being built? Or is that going to potentially, you know, even out? And who's potentially filling these jobs? Are they living here or are they living elsewhere? But clearly any economic development strategy that is coherent needs to think about those.
So, so you've got a 25% growth rate between the three counties.
Yep.
Which is the highest growth rate, I believe, in the entire state.
Yes.
And have you ever done any research to determine in regards to the affordability sector, which we talk about a lot? How far out does somebody is willing to go to come into town?
Yes.
To take care of that job that may not be paying as much to make it more affordable?
Yeah. I mean, that, that's, so I, I'll give you a true part of the answer. So, so we have fairly good information about how many people, for example, and I, I was telling people in Brunswick County this yesterday. Not that they steal jobs from New Hanover County, but there's a non-negligible amount of income out of New Hanover that's leaking into Brunswick County, right? And clearly a portion of the reasons for that is housing, right? And so clearly people are making decisions based on what they can, can afford. And we have fairly good information about how many jobs exist here and where people actually live around. I can give you a breakdown of, out of all the jobs here, how many are held by New Hanover County residents and how many are held by people outside of New Hanover. Interesting. So, so we have these flows that, that exist that I'd be happy to provide.
I would like to see that. I think, I think that would be very important to us and it would also be very important to, uh, see Mike's phone right now, but, um, to our transportation folks, because that ties into a transportation network.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. So, 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 so we, we have fairly good information about that. Now, a, as I've said, the, the two, to me, go hand in hand. This question about affordability and housing supply go hand in hand. There is no easy answer because, and, and maybe this is part of it is the growth obviously happens very quickly, right? So now there is this catch-up question. But I think that the catch-up question is to make sure that you actually are prepared for the next boom as opposed to.
I don't, did you mention, what is the inflation rate right now?
3.2% is, October reading was 3.2% relative to last.
And the Fed's, um, goal is to?
Yeah. I mean, they, they, we, I, I don't, I think that they've softly moved away from an exact number. What they're wanting is a slowdown in acceleration. So they actually, so their, this last reading, they were celebrating because the month over month was zero. So from September to October, it was zero. That was the, the message that they were trying to.
And the forecast is continued growth in the rate or to stabilize it and start coming back down?
That's, that's, the, the forecast is, is for it to actually stabilize and start coming back, right? And so that, and again, absent re-acceleration episodes, right? And so, uh, that's what they're hoping.
You hit on trends.
Yeah.
I don't know, you know, without the chart, I don't know where we started going like, let's say, 2012, middle 2011, early 2011.
Yes.
To, to, today.
Sure.
Is that, that's an unusually long period without a downturn?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, and again.
It's really long.
I mean, so, so again, take the housing recession out of it and it's like this straight line of growth. And it's, again, partially because of migration, partially because of these change in dynamics that, that the power centers around the country are shifting, right? And so we have triangle that's growing, we have people that are choosing to work remotely. And then there is this, I'm a regional economist, do people follow jobs or do jobs follow people question, right? And so when people are voting with their feet, right? And so, and companies are starting to follow them. And so, but, but it's, but it's a golden decade, right?
We can't have a decade like that or even longer, 12 year, whatever it is now. I mean, that's when the infrastructure.
Yeah.
Housing, I mean, you just, you can't keep up.
Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, I, I, to me, again, and this is what's difficult. People think that growth is painless, not you guys, but, but growth presents a lot of other challenges, especially that there is tension between short-term and long-term concerns, right? How do you make sure that you grow in a way that maintains quality of life? And that ensures that the already existing residents are actually benefiting from this growth? That, that growth is evenly distributed, that you're talking about quality of life.
You just described our world.
Yeah. Are you interested in running for office?
Ah, no, no. I'll stay, I'll stay in my office making maps.
Just to join you.
Just, just out of curiosity, um, because you're talking about, um, how thermofisher, we've named other companies now, even, um, Horizon that came out, they're building, of course, all their workers are remote now.
Yeah.
I know there's a significant amount of workers at the university. Are you also doing some of that? Were you working from, from home?
Nope.
Everybody's back in the.
We're back in the office, we're teaching face-to-face. I mean, there are online programs.
Sure.
Uh, but everybody is face-to-face, all classes are in person. So there is basically no remote work. And, and you, you didn't ask about this, but one of the things that I don't have access to, and this is important, is you mentioned housing is, we still have a non-negligible number of people who are working remotely, meaning affiliated with a Goldman Sachs or a Google. But we don't have any data on these people, right? And we were talking about housing. How many of them are potentially going to go back? How many of them bought homes or are renting homes? And how many of them are potentially occupying some of the homes that you were describing? And I, we don't have any visibility on any of that. And, and just quickly, I mean, this is the same point that I was making is, again, uh, this is relative to 2019. And this is percentage change in growth. And one of the things that I want to point out here is this is using the latest numbers. It's telling you that Wilmington has basically 12 and a half percent more jobs today than it did in August of 2019. And we were actually outperforming the state and most metropolitan areas up until the last few months, when we've started experiencing the slowdown. And now we're basically mirroring the, the rate of growth of the state. And this is probably the, again, the most surprising picture because for the last two and a half years, we were growing considerably faster than most metros. But because of that decline in professional and business services and leisure and hospitality, this is the first month where we're actually turned negative. And we're growing now at the slowest rate amongst all the, the metros. But we're still outperforming many of them relative to 2019. And again, the thing that I'm trying to see here is whether this is a blip because of that reclassification or whether there is something that's kind of stickier. But, um, and I'm just going to skip these because we, the previous presentation talked about room occupancy. But I, I look at it because it tells me again, this relative, uh, uh, rate of increase. And the relative rate of increase has started to come down, right? And so, so again, think about the year over year, we saw 2021 to 2022, that was fairly big. And now still growing, but it's growing at a much smaller rate. I'm just going to skip this and I want to show you the employments. Cause that's to me, again, another thing about visitations. This is employment data, uh, from ILM and those are percentage changes relative to the previous year. So it shows you in August, employments were 29% higher than they were the previous August, right? And so, and that again, is an indication to me of consumer spending. And we have this front seat to people making these decisions about travel and clearly people are still traveling.
Here, this could also be some of your, uh, we call it a remote.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. So, so.
If that's sticky, that number's getting affected by that.
Yeah, that, that, that's a good point. And, and unfortunately I found out this recently that the way they define business travels versus leisure travel is just based on when you booked the ticket. So there is no real data that actually tells you, uh, how they separate those two numbers. And so that's difficult. This is a picture that I've always showed, because we started the conversation on inflation. And this is showing you the average wage growth by metropolitan area. And then it's showing you the CPI in August. And the reason I show you this, and again, is because to me, so the horizontal line is just showing you US CPI, that's average wage increase or, or average price increase, sorry. And then the bars are showing you the rate at which wages have been increasing. And if you see Wilmington, it's showing that seven and a half percent. My joke, I was giving a talk at the Economic Outlook, the dean was there and I said, well, I certainly didn't get a seven and a half. And then I asked the audience to send an email to the dean. And so if you know him, he deserves a seven and a half percent rate. But a lot of people look at that number and they say, that doesn't make any sense. Cause most people you know, probably they didn't get a seven and a half percent. That's a composition of facts. And what I mean by that is because a lot of the weight, a lot of the occupations that we have tend to be in low wage sectors that were experiencing those shortages. And so there was that significant increase in wages, in leisure and hospitality, in accommodation and food services. And by the way, that obviously has made it very difficult to be competitive with some of those sectors. I'm sure a lot of you would attest to the fact that local governments all around the country have had difficulty hiring because people are getting higher wages in some of these sectors. And so it creates these imbalances in the labor market that become very, very difficult to deal with. The labor market, the, the private sector tends to be considerably more responsive to dynamics than governments. And again, that's just a, an aside, but, but it's important to think about. Um, and this is making exactly the same point. Again, just on average in 2023, Wilmington's hourly earnings grew on average by 5%. Inflation was 3.7%. So again, purchasing power, I'm not saying that people are not feeling inflation, but purchasing power is actually higher today with real wages, meaning adjusted for inflation are actually still higher. And that explains a lot of what we see when we walk around and see that people are continuing to go out and spend. Because yes, prices are higher, but their wages are higher as well. I'm just going to move to the housing, the housing market that I promise I'm going to start talking. This is to me, probably the, the, the thing that's been the most surprising. The Federal Reserve was really, really hoping to make a dent in prices. Not to talk about math, but when you look at that slope of that line between 2020 and 2022, it's incredibly steep, right? So that's an index. So those are prices relative to January 2020. And you see that very steep increase basically all the way to 2022. And then you can see the flattening of that line, which basically tells you that the rate of increase has slowed. But we're maintaining all of the pandemic related gains, right? On average, and I'll show you a map next, housing prices in the area today are 55% higher than they were in January 2020. And so this is the map that shows you this again. The scale is the same and as you can see, this is not even a regional story. So when you look at that map, it tells you that prices, so when it says 1.55, it's basically telling you that prices today, median prices today are 55% higher than they were in January 2020. And throughout the state, when you look at that map, it's basically anywhere from 20 to 70%. And the, the question obviously going forward is what's going to give, who's going to blink, right? And so if buyers blink and they come back, then obviously prior prices are going to keep increasing. And if we see a significant increase in supply, then obviously prices are going to come down. This is a question of demand and supply and obviously what's going to happen to interest rates. And clearly about, uh, uh, what's going to happen to, uh, uh, more or less migration, right? And so, uh, how sticky these prices are, are, is, is a function of whether or not we keep getting people from the Northeast or from other counties buying, uh, some of this inventory. And this is, again, even if you were to ask me before actually doing this, I would now guess that this is the, 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 these are the numbers. So this is just October 2022 to October 2023 price growth. And there is still growth in median prices, basically in most counties around. I mean, prices are still increasing. So when it shows point oh two or point oh six, that means on average prices grew at 6% between 2022 and 2023, which means again, there is no, uh, uh, letting out of, uh, uh, prices, uh, over the last year. And. This is just to close, but if we were to take all of this information into account and say, where does this leave us? Well, it leaves us in a world where, to me at least, there is evidence that there is this kind of deceleration in growth. Most of the national forecasts say that the US economy is going to grow slower than it did the last couple of years. We have some forecasts of the state economy that say, yeah, we're still going to grow, but the growth is going to be a little bit slower. Our economy regionally is much more sensitive to consumer spending and therefore potentially much more sensitive to this deceleration. So I don't think we should be surprised if we start seeing some of the air come out of some of the sectors that are most sensitive to that consumer spending. And that's why that initial fullest point about a potential down year. I think that we have, if we put all the evidence together, I think that there is, uh, uh, a lot of reason to think that this slowdown is incoming, but that doesn't mean it's a doom and gloom scenario.
Is there, you have any, maybe we've uncovered, covered so much, but the, how much, you know, say a decade ago, our economy was tourism versus now?
Yeah, to, to, yeah, to, the economy, there is no, the economy is becoming considerably more diversified, right? So we have less exposure to leisure and hospitality today than we did before. But the, as a share of the economy, it's still the biggest share, joint part, right? And so, but, but it's, it's slowly going down and we have a larger share of higher paying jobs, right? And so a little bit of tech, a little bit of finance, and so those sectors are becoming more prominent. But for, if you were to create a pie, it's still going to be the most, leisure and hospitality is still going to be the most dominant. Yeah, just go through, yeah. Uh, and, and just, this is really the, the point that we were talking about a second ago, about this, this notion of short-term versus long-term growth, right? And so clearly the area has grown quite a bit. One of the things that I emphasize in a lot of these talks is that there is an evenness in growth, right? And so when you look at the state, there are a lot of communities that are actually still below pre-pandemic levels. The growth is not even, and it's important again to just think about these long-term considerations, right? And so you've mentioned demographics, you've mentioned affordability, we've mentioned the type of jobs that exist. And so the long-term planning becomes really important, especially when you benefited tremendously from the short-term migration. If you could just go to the next slide, I'm just going to show you one more map and it's aging. And I, and I, I promise this is the last one. Maybe he says it up there. So, uh, this is the, the thing that, again, if you're thinking, if you think about economic development or you think about labor force or you think about pitching the area to potential employers, this is probably the most concerning picture, right? And so companies obviously think about taxes, think about a bundle of goods and services, but they think about labor force. And clearly we have an aging state, right? And so, uh, and so the question again is, what are the engines of growth go, going forward? And how do we make sure that quality of life is such that it attracts and retains a lot of the talent, right? And so as a university worker, one of the questions we ask ourselves is where do graduates go? What are the attributes of those places? Can we do certain things to keep some of these people and attract other people who are potentially going to be taking some of these jobs in some of these, uh, uh, firms that are being attracted? And I think, uh, uh, that I just have, uh, the closing slide, you can just skip this. Please reach out if I can be of help, if you'd like to yell at me for something I've said, email me. If, but if we can help with economic forecasting or economic impact analysis, or if you just have questions, please feel free to.
Thank you very well.
Mayor, you want to take a break?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the mayor pointed out immediately prior to the break that we have some new folks in the room here who probably don't know everybody else who's sitting in the room today. And not everybody in here is part of what I consider to be the best team in North Carolina in terms of municipal administration. But I'd like to at least have the opportunity to, uh, have folks give you their name, uh, the position they're working in, and also give them the number of years you've been with the city, one way or the other. So we'll start with Nicole, who, by the way, is now our new strategic planner.
Hey.
Uh, she comes over from the planning department, but she was by far the best candidate for the strategic planning job. So Nicole, we'll start with you.
Nicole Smith, um, I'm currently in the planning department, so you may contribute an awful presentation for meetings. Um, I've been with the city for two years currently, previous stint of five years. Um, I am excited to take on the opportunity of strategic planning performance in the current budget, starting December 4.
Rachel Loco, I'm the director of housing and urban services, two weeks here, um, but again, five years previously, so.
Ron Chambers, I am assistant director for planning and development.
Dave, Dave's a public works director of the city.
Mike just lost the executive director of the Metropolitan Fund Corporation.
Some more parking downtown coordination, seven-ish.
Amy Gady, Parks Recreation Director, and I think you're twenty-five years saying housing.
Donnie Williams, Police Chief, I've been here full-time thirty-one years and two years part-time prior to that.
Justine Roberts, the auditor, and I've been here since February.
Robert's HR Director.
You're the legislative and area representative here, so I think you're one.
Stay standing. This woman is deserting us, Mr. Mayor. Suzanne has, she's gonna move on to Virginia Tech as the capital improvement program director. We congratulate her on the up, moving up in rank and responsibility. We are shunning her for leaving the organization. Suzanne is one of those people that's been around for a long time. She worked her way up through public services. She, Laura drug her over to the budget department. What, how many years ago?
Two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, a long time ago, and Suzanne has made herself indispensable. She is going to be a very big, very big shoes to fill, but I want to say congratulations to her publicly.
Hey Sean, good job.
Hi, I'm Jay Owo, I'm in the budget department at the East for ten years.
Dylan Lee, I'm the production manager and communications, twenty-three years.
Steve Mason, I'm the fire chief, I've been here thirty-three years.
Jennifer Moretti, I've been at the City of Wilmington, seven and a half years, but twenty-eight and a half is local government funding.
Phil Conway, Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer, been here just shy of two years.
Aubrey Parsley, I'm the director of economic development, been here just under five years.
Jared Patterson, communications director.
David Powell, Director of Engineering, twenty-two years.
Brian Scott, IT Director, been here seven years and I think four years in local government work consulting other government agencies.
Can't hide in the corner.
Scott Walsh, many a contact, seventy-three years.
And Laura Mortal, City's Budget Director, on and off for fifteen years.
Go ahead, we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it right.
Oh, we're gonna do it right. Very big, one of the deputy city managers. I think it's been eighteen months, wonderful months, there you go.
Chad McEwan, Deputy City Manager, seventeen months or so.
Deputy City Manager, closing, you know, six years, next, first six years.
Mary Zeller, Park, I am city attorney, not mayor, twelve years.
Penny Spicer, Sidbury City Clerk, forty years, but thirty-two as city clerk.
And I'm Tony Cottle, I've been here fifteen years, I've got forty-two years of service in local government.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate it. With that, we will move on to Ms. Mortel, who has concerns she's not gonna be able to be heard. So put on your listening ears and let's see if we can get her to get into this presentation.
My hunger dreams. We're gonna be on the fourth tab, and we're gonna talk about the financial position. First, we're gonna go back to FY twenty-four or the current year and talk about that. And then we're gonna go into the development of that FY twenty-five budget. So the first slide that I'd like to just remind budget of what we adopted the FY twenty-four budget ad, it was three hundred and fifty-one million dollars with the general fund being about forty-two percent of that, and that is in the operating fund category, and it's just shy of a hundred and forty-eight million. And then the next couple of slides are kind of like a revenue one-on-one on our biggest funds. And I just wanted to be able to tell you some things about them. And remind you that the city does experience delays, which causes some prediction issues going forward. Property tax is the largest revenue that we have. It does come in between December and January of every timeframe. That's when we get the majority of that funding. It makes up forty-eight percent of the general fund. Our last appraisal was in January of twenty-one, and that impacted FY twenty-two's budget. The next one is scheduled for FY twenty-five, and now it'll impact FY twenty-six's budget. I want to remind council that a couple of years ago, we talked about ninety-six properties that are going through the Brownsfield tax exemption, and that's a five-year staggered amount that they walk through if they get approved by the city or by the state. That means the land had some environmental remediation that was required. And the incentive that the state gives them is if they do this remediation, they will get a tax exemption for five years. Three of those properties are quite significant. The ninety-six total bought eight hundred thousand dollars of the tax rate or the tax revenue. Six hundred thousand dollars are these three properties. So we have the flats in Pier Thirty-Three, that will be in their third year in FY twenty-five. And we have River Place, which will be in its fourth year in FY twenty-five as well. And so we believe that in FY twenty-five, of all those ninety-six, we should be able to just get about a hundred, two hundred thousand of that money back based on where people are in their staggered five years.
So it is staggered, though?
It is staggered.
And in the majority, that is in the first year, two years?
Yeah, the first two, as you can see on your page, the first year is ninety percent exemption. So then it goes to seventy-five the second year, fifty percent the third, and then it starts going to thirty percent and ten percent. So by the sixth year, they're paying a hundred, hundred percent. So I wanna walk everyone through and remind council how we budgeted and balanced the budget last year. So our property tax is thirty-nine point five cents. And one cent is about two and a quarter million. The property tax revenue is split between the general fund and debt service. So in FY twenty-three, the split was thirty-two point three seven for the general fund and seven point thirteen for the debt service. In FY twenty-four, we kept the same rate of thirty-nine and a half cents. But we split and moved one point one two cents to the debt model or debt service enabled to fund, and that's about two and a half million dollars. And so the general fund is finally a nice number to say thirty-one and a quarter, and debt is eight and a quarter. So what we did was we had no reductions of any service. We used natural growth, and then we reallocated that split of the property tax to be able to balance the budget last year. Sales tax is, it comes in monthly, but there is a three and a half month lag. So that means we get July sales tax, it doesn't come until October fifteenth. The last month of the year is in June, we don't get that sales tax until September fifteenth. So keep that in mind, when we're developing a budget, we have six to seven months at most to develop the budget as we move forward. And then we watch it very carefully the rest of the time to see how we're gonna be doing and hopefully trending positively. This is, yes.
On the sales tax distribution, we, I know that at one time the state was charting that, and then it kind of went away. When we last charted it, we were getting about twenty cents out of every dollar that was being spent. The rest goes to the county. Is that dropping or is it stabilized at about twenty percent?
Ah, I haven't looked, I should have looked at that. I can get that for you, I don't wanna, it's relatively about the same. So we usually do about twenty-five to twenty-eight percent.
Cause the general fund thinks whatever dollars spent in sales tax revenue, we're getting all of it, and that is a misnumber.
Right, it's based on property that. Yes.
And twenty percent comes to us.
And I will get those.
But what is generated is just the opposite. That's what's always stuck in my craw. Eighty percent of it was generated within the corporate limits, and we get twenty percent back or thereabouts. You get choose. Well, I mean, you can either do it on land or more, you can do it on population.
The sales tax is the second largest revenue source. It is the hardest to predict because it's based on the economy and what's happening in the economy and consumer confidence. FY twenty-four, it was thirty percent of the general fund revenue. Your local or intergovernmental revenue is exactly as the term suggests. It's revenue from other government entities. The funding that we have mainly in this category is from North Carolina franchise tax. So we're the beneficiary of utility taxes such as electric, natural gas, telecommunications, and video programming. These funds are distributed to us on a quarterly basis. Also included in there is the ABC revenue, the beer and wine, and the Powell. This is the third largest, it's eleven percent of the budget. Beer, wine, Powell.
Which is, which is a portion of the gas tax, which is a portion to municipalities.
I'm gonna go in the street, yeah, and get so much gas money.
If there's no questions about those three, I'm gonna move on to just the core, really brief couple of slides on quarterly reports that we look at for FY twenty-four. This slide is just telling you how to read your report. Essentially, the report is in your packet for nice light reading. And we look at two fiscal years, revenue or revised budget to actuals, because the city has pretty much a good cadence of spending habits, and the majority of our spending is our employees. And so we look at various anomalies that we'll find and dig to see if there's anything to make sure we're still on the trends. And those are identified on the other side with a letter, and we tell you what those are, and we dig and we find stuff. So where are we staying? Well, unfortunately, the quarterly report, the first quarter, doesn't tell us much because of the lag in revenues. So the revenues, anything that we saw in there was really based on the timing of those revenues. The expenditures were trending about the same as last year as well. And I think the most interesting part and one of the good parts is that we have stopped our vacancy rate from continuing to go up. So when council authorized our compensation plan, we were at about a hundred and fifty. We've come down, which was the good news. We haven't come down even further than that, we've come down to a hundred, and we're still sitting at a hundred. So perspective, prior to COVID and the labor market and all this craziness that we're having now, we were about fifty at any given time. So hopefully we can get back to fifty at any given time, but I don't know what the new normal is. So other than that, that, so that's actually good news that we are staying stable and not increasing anymore. We do have some supply chain issues, and it's not necessarily, we can't, we can't get the items, but it's everyone's trying to catch up and get the items as well. And there's been some business changes, instead of having those, those items in store ready to go, you have to actually order them. And so there's, there's some things that we're encountering that's a little different. Some things that they call us and tell us they have ten vehicles ready, and we have to go right then and there again. So there's, there's some differences that we're trying to work through, getting those vehicles and getting those supplies so we can continue our businesses. And now, for what everyone wants to know, is how are we gonna develop that FY twenty-four or twenty-five budget? I always like to start out with the calendar, just as like the benchmarks and key benchmarks that we have. It doesn't change significantly, but the dates change a little bit. We provide you with work sessions as we develop the budget because we want council to guide us as much as possible. So when we do come in May for the city manager's recommended budget, it's something that we can all agree to for the most part. So we have two work sessions in, one in January, one in March. We have the recommended budget in May, followed quickly behind by the public hearing mid-May. We have the last opportunity for council to look at the budget as that's a work session also at the end of May. And then we adopt the budget in June. So this year, we wanted to give you some forecasts at a high level, and we wanted to do it somewhat in a range because, you know, we can't predict everything so early. And I just want to admit that this is very early to do it. We have two sales, sales tax months. Both of them were positive over the prior year, but they were not double digits. But we're, we were doing our best with the data that we have now. And so we want to be able to tell you what we're thinking going forward. So how did we do property tax? We looked at the year-over-year growth for the last two years. Sales tax, we were pretty conservative. We looked at FY twenty-three's and FY twenty-four's, pretty much the last twelve that we got, not real time for that. And then the other revenues, we right-sized based on what we saw coming in from FY twenty-four and if there were any anomalies, because those are more our charges for services. And that's, you do the most recent, you're gonna get the most recent behavior. For the expenditures, we start, we started with FY twenty-four's adopted and took out all of the one times. So we're base budget, we're starting out with. For property tax, property tax really grows pretty consistently. The last two years, the average was two point seven three percent. And we were looking at that going into this budget, and that's what we put two, two point seven three there. We don't start getting that data from the county until February. So up until February, we're really just basing it on the past average that we saw. Once New Hanover County sends out that information to us in February, they start sending refined ones every month, so we can start looking at that data. And then finally, we get a final one for the recommended budget, and that's what we stick with. The only way that we can really get any more revenue here is really with a tax adjustment. We're required to do by law, net neutral, when we have reevaluations, we're required to at least state what that is, and then we can increase it after that. So really, a tax adjustment is really all, the only way other than that natural growth that you can get any more revenue in there. And now for the good news. Sales tax is the hardest to predict, as I said. With the pandemic, federal stimulus, the hurricanes, and now this now inflation, this one is, is really difficult. What we did know prior to FY twenty and twenty-one is that we were always three to, two to three percent over the state average. So we could pretty much consistently be okay with five to six percent over the prior year. Well, then the pandemic occurred, and nobody statewide or even nationally could have even imagined the double digits that we were having come in for sales tax. And what was predictable is that it was gonna slow. We couldn't continue to get the double digits. It started slowing last year. So when I was developing that FY twenty-four budget, the first six, seven months that we had, it was growing between whichever categories you looked at, between six to eight percent. With the economy that, or the threat of the economy, we stayed with sixty-eight percent. And we didn't increase it any further than, than that, because we didn't know if FY twenty-four was gonna grow over FY twenty-three. Well, what happened is that the actuals, not the budget, we made our budget last year, but the actuals were only three percent over the prior year. That's the lowest I've ever seen it since two thousand sixteen, I haven't gone back. And what does that mean going forward? That means our FY twenty-four budget, you would have to make five million dollars over the prior year actuals. If you look at that nine-year chart, there's only one year that we did that, and that was during the pandemic. So I'm not waving, you know, red flag yet, and I'm not sure what's gonna happen, but chances are we're not gonna make that budget, and we're probably gonna make more like two and a half million instead of five. So we're watching that, but then the impact for FY twenty-five's budget would be flat. And that's why you're seeing a flat one here, because the data is telling me actually to decrease it a little, but I'm not gonna do that yet. So we're keeping it flat and making assumptions that most likely it's gonna go back to smaller growth. We're gonna get two and a half million to three million each year.
And when Laura says flat, it's flat between what we budgeted for this year and what we'll budget for next year. There will be growth between what we actually received this year and what we expected to receive next year. But she's talking about projections versus projections.
And then as the months come in, we're obviously gonna like watch and reevaluate that. As we go into every budget year, we always have priorities. One of the priorities we want is our workforce and to remain competitive. They're, they're the most valuable asset that we have in giving our customers what they need. And we have to think about remaining competitive and whatever that workforce trend is telling us. We have the human service competitive process that is starting in FY twenty-five for another two years. So we will have that process. So we will have that process. We want to continue to have our core services at, kind of work at their same levels now. We will try and be creative and innovative on how we do that if, if we, you know, are, are struggling to fund some of the things. But we, we would like to keep them the same and not change our services for, for our customers. And then we want to adopt a CIP for our capital improvement plan that has both infrastructure and maintenance. Somewhat our order is number five. We have some inflation impacts. We want to look at where though that is really heavily impacting it, see which services that will be and kind of maybe prop them up in our core services if we need to. With any new budget, we know we have some, some things that we can do. The state employer, employer side of the retirement, we know they've been increasing that over the, every year by one point two percent. I think that five-year plan that they were going to do that to get back on track is over. So I'm, I'm guessing that's going to be about one percent. And so I want to build that into the budget so it's not there. We do not get that number until March or April. So if I build it in as, as an assumption in the beginning, we're not out, whatever that is. We know we have the transit subsidy you have to calculate. That's by interlocal agreement. We have utilities and fees and, and insurance. We have. I'm sorry, what? It's three percent each year. And then last year we did another three percent because of some of the changes that they did with the routes. Yeah, it's about a hundred and thirty. No, 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 of our, what we budget. So we, I, I want to say it's about a hundred and, or one point three million. And then each year it's probably with the six percent about a hundred and thirty thousand, but I can get to that for sure. Thank you. Has to go up three points. We have this building that we're sitting in now. We need to fund the operating and then the compensation package, whatever the workforce trends are telling us. So we estimated some amount and we think it's going to be, this is system-wide, just under ten million dollars, just to do that, those basic things that we know of right now. Put some of that into perspective on where the general fund is going to be. When we talked about the base budget, the base budget comes out to be just under a hundred and thirty seven million. When we add in the general funds portion of the last slide, the employee retirement, the utilities that we know of right now, it comes through around eight, just under nine million dollars. So that brings the, um, potential general fund to a hundred and forty five point five million prior to any requests that we've gotten from departments. For revenue, we did another estimate on the conservative top side. It would be one hundred and forty two point two million. And then on the higher end, we could get potentially a hundred and forty six point seven million. And that was meaning high on the sales tax, why we might grow three percent. So some of that might have.
What was the difference in this most recent year?
For sales tax?
No, for the preliminary revenue, right?
Um, I'm going to have to get what we, the percent, I don't have that in my head. I think he's, he's asking for what the property tax.
The range projected.
We didn't project. This is the first time.
Isn't that what that is?
Yes, this is, so we project later and this is the first time we've come to you this early to do this, this type of stuff.
Good, I understand that. What was the difference? What was the range last year and where did it end up?
I can get that for you. I don't have that in my head. You're welcome.
Compensation piece, elaborate a little bit.
So the compensation, we're making some assumptions on that by looking at the workforce trends. And so we did, we thought of the high end of what we might want. And so it was about four million dollars for the general fund. And then if we, that's like the potentially top part, maybe at what we're seeing now. Now, we will have Clayton talk about the workforce trends in our, in our future presentation today.
We're also looking, you recall we have money in the budget for compensation review to determine whether or not our overall compensation was competitive or really competitive or under the competitive with regards to our labor.
Ordinary revenue. Is that one forty two and one forty six include our sales tax projections?
Yes. Yep, I did a zero percent for the lower end and a three percent for the higher end and property tax you can see two. And then I went to the high, yeah, seventy five. And then, so the gap that we have, or and it's, it's a gap that we can essentially put towards other needs would be around, one million two hundred thousand to five million four hundred thousand. And that depends on, you know, what everyone decides to put into the budget and how much things come out to be. So that's just the things we know of right now. It's by no way everything that we know we need. But we just wanted to give you a picture of what we were seeing with our highest revenues. So the next steps, obviously we're going to continue to refine the revenues as they start coming in. We want to continue to refine what we think the best compensation package would be based on the workforce trends that we're seeing. We want to work with departments to find strategic ways to support them. And that doesn't always mean money. So we want to look at innovative ways that we have service delivery and potentially change some of those to meet the same end. And then we want to develop the next CIP. And that's all I have for you today. Are there any questions?
I guess just from this, our operating budget needs, if we fulfill some of the variable obligations that we have outstanding, those numbers would, would not be affected or that would be affected.
It affects our ability to. It, to do debt. So it would affect our CIP, which we'll talk about after lunch. And so the more properties we sell and put back into the debt model to pay that down, the less implications on the tax rate for our future CIP. Cause you know, as we talked about, when we do a CIP, we increase the tax rate associated with it. The more we can pay that debt down, the more capacity we have so that we don't have to increase the tax rate. But the only way it impacts the general fund is if you change like we did last year, the property tax distribution. Sorry, I didn't mean.
Other questions? Next we've got Clay Roberts coming forward to give us an update on our workforce. Not only some of the work that's going on in that area, but also a snapshot of what it looked like with regard to demographics, so.
Morning Mayor, Mayor President, members of council, council members elect, welcome. I'm going to give you an update as Tony said, our most valuable asset, which is our employees. So I'm going to start by covering our demographics, move into turnover, reasons for leaving. Talk about what labor trends we're seeing, discuss what, um, we're doing as an organization, remain competitive to attract and retain top talent. And then we'll finish up discussing what we're seeing employee compensation for FY twenty five. So I want to start out first by looking at our, our demographics, what we look like. This data was pulled, um, at the end of October. So at that time we had one thousand seventy six employees. We are a male-dominated workforce, seventy four percent male, twenty six percent female. Many of our occupations are male-dominated industries, so police, fire, public works, parks. So those are male-dominated. On average, our average age is forty two, forty three years old. It's starting to come down as our boomers are exiting the workforce and our millennials and Generation X are, are taking off. You'll notice that millennials and Generation X make up eighty percent of our workforce. Generation Z, they're entering, uh, they have, make up ten percent of our workforce. Probably next year when I present to you, uh, the boomers will be the minority in the workforce as those folks continue to retire. With regards to ethnicity, we are predominantly, um, white at seventy five percent, followed by sixteen percent black and four percent Hispanic. And I'm going to show you how we compare to the community on the next slide here. So our goal obviously is to match the, the, the community that we serve. And so starting in upper left-hand corner, um, you'll see that, uh, we have a slightly higher white population than city residents, which is that gray bar. We're on average though, with New Hanover County at seventy six percent, which is that green bar and still higher than the state. Moving over to the black population, we have sixteen percent, which is higher than, uh, both the city residents in Hanover County, but still less than the state of North Carolina at twenty percent. And then looking at our bottom left-hand corner, the Hispanic population, um, that is an area that we have an opportunity to tap into that resource for, um, less than both the residents and the state and the county. So we're going out in the community, we're doing radio advertising, going to community events, trying to tap into, to, to that workforce. Um, other things departments have been doing across the, the city, try to increase the diversity of our applicant pools. They've been going to HBCU universities. They've been, um, attending community events. We've been, uh, for example, fire department is starting a junior firefighter academy, which is trying to recruit diverse group of youth to get them interested in firefighting. So we're doing different things to increase our diversity of the workforce. Talking about our new hires, promotions and separations. Um, in two, in, um, twenty twenty two, we hired two hundred nine people, which was a thirty four percent increase from the previous year, which is awesome. Uh, we believe that's part and due to the compensation study that we put in place that year, as well as people coming back to work, um, post-pandemic. You'll see this year in twenty twenty three, we're already a hundred and seventy two new hires. Um, and we should end the year around two hundred, so similar to where we were last year. Again, things are starting to, to level off for us here at the city. With so many retirements and separations, which I'll talk about in a minute, over the last few years, it's provided opportunities for staff to promote within the organization. So far in twenty twenty three, we've had a hundred and forty five promotions, which is a forty five percent increase from the previous year. This number is also inclusive of our police academy and fire academy. When those individuals were promoted to sworn positions, we include them in that number. We've had several large groups, which is, which is a good thing. Another good trend you'll see is with our separations. We were at all-time high in twenty twenty one with a hundred and ninety seven separations. You might remember that year was termed the great resignation with people moving and changing jobs. We were not immune to that, but since then our separations have been decreasing each year. We saw a twenty percent decrease in twenty twenty two and we're currently seeing a nine percent decrease, um, this year compared to the same time last year. So another good trend.
Clayton, of that, uh, separations, uh, this, just for example, twenty twenty two, can you, uh, have the number of what was, part of that was in public safety?
Certainly, I can, I can get that information for you. Correct, yep. Talk about that in a few minutes. But moving on to our citywide turnover rate. So this measures the total number of employees each fiscal year by the average number of, of, number of separations by the average number of employees. So our turnover ended in FY twenty three at fifteen point four percent, which you'll see is the lowest that it's had, it's been since, uh, post-pandemic, which is good. The average turnover rate, just put in perspective for state and local governments across the, uh, the country is twenty percent. So we're doing slightly better than, than the national average. Looking specifically at police and fire. Police ended FY twenty three at thirteen percent turnover rate, which again is lower than the city average. And it's also the lowest post-pandemic. Fire ended FY twenty three at nine percent, which much lower than the city average, also lowest post-pandemic. So these are good trends, um, and are better numbers than many of our, uh, peer municipalities in the state. Looking at the turnover in our, um, other departments. So community services is that purple bar, engineering is the green bar and public services is the yellow bar. I highlight these three departments because this is where we're seeing the bulk of our turnover. And we have the highest vacancy rates, which I will discuss on the next slide. All three departments ended FY twenty three with higher turnover rates than the city average. Many of the positions in these departments are made up of our skills trades positions that require specific skills and licenses. And this sector of the, um, job market has taken the biggest hit. And companies are competing for this scarce labor. Um, and so these departments are not immune to, to the environment that we're currently in. Looking at our current vacancy rates across the organization, these numbers are a snapshot in time. And so I pulled these numbers at the end of October. So these have already fluctuated and changed and I'll talk a little bit about that. But if you look at the dark blue bar on the far right, top right, you will see that the city has a hundred and five vacant positions or an eight point eight percent vacancy rate. This number was about the same at this time last year. So as Laura mentioned, this may be our new normal. I don't know. I hope we can, I wish we can get back down to our pre-pandemic levels. We'll just see as we progress through time.
So I just want, I mean, I'm reading it. I just want to make sure you say it out loud. We've only got five vacant slots in fire?
Yes, sir. I'll talk about that in more detail in just a minute. We have high rate of vacancies in public services, community services. I will detail that by division in just a moment. IT, MPO, clerk's office, attorney's office, you'll see they're, they're not mentioned here. Those departments are all fully staffed. Attorney's office does have one vacancy. Looking at police and fire vacancy rates. They're both doing very well with regards to number of vacant positions. You'll notice that the fire department has twenty two vacant vacancies, but they did just onboard a couple of weeks ago, seventeen new firefighters that are going through the academy. And so once they graduate, those seventeen will fill those vacant, some of those twenty two vacancies. Um, and so that will bring them down to really only four vacant positions. It's just, that's how we got to the four.
Remember this snapshot at the time. How long has the academy stayed?
Six months.
Six.
Forthcoming.
So six months from now, we may have somebody else who leaves and come, so we may not be all the way down as low as we want to be.
We should talk about, um, we would train police and then they would leave us. Would that hold true with the fire department?
Absolutely.
It does. We're not losing them to other departments.
But the bottom line is it's money. I mean, a guy doesn't leave a, a career job in the fire department to go and work at, uh, an engineering firm just because he wants to not be a fireman. It's, it's money.
Um, looking at the police department, they have, it's showing here thirty seven vacancies. Thirty of those are sworn law enforcement officer positions, seven are civilian. They do have seventeen individuals going through BLET. Um, and once they graduated, they'll graduate, they'll be sworn in and they will help fill some of those thirty seven. So when you count those in academy, they really only have thirteen sworn vacancies. His chief will tell you though, just like fire, it's going to take him eighteen months before he can make those, those seventeen fully deployable. Once they graduate BLET, because they gotta do field training. This, this also doesn't include, it looked, these numbers look good, but they also have folks that are on workers comp, out on FMLA. And so any given day, there's obviously more vacancies than you see listed here on this, uh, this chart.
To add to that, um, this is the only paper number, the real number is about fifty. Right now we have fourteen that are in the academy. I have fourteen that are in field training that basically are connected by a bill for another officer that are known to, I have three that await certification. You throw in FMLA, military leagues, it comes out at fifty. Again, it's real good on paper, but the reality of it is, it's not.
Let me jump in right there. By the way, I'm back. This is, this looks good. Right on paper. We just came out of a, do I dare to say a grueling campaign season? Where, uh, WPD kind of got raped over the coals for not being fully staffed. And, and some of the candidates for Wilmington City Council seem to have a magic wand or had a magic wand where they're going to help fully staff the WPD. So we need a, we need. So we need a, we need the real world numbers, you know? I understand having people in the tunnel potentially that are gonna graduate and a percentage, a high percentage of those folks will end up working for the city of Wilmington, the WPD, the WFD. But the vacancies are the vacancies. And, and we need a, a real world depiction of, of what we're facing, why we're facing it. And, and what we can do to get better. And, and is it, is it even feasible to, to get any better than where we are? Because I, I think you have to look at it, it's not just a Wilmington, North Carolina trend, it's a national trend. Don't let me soak the air out of the room. Come on, guys.
Well, I mean, a chief, two chiefs, it's a trend.
Robin Bar just get on this, it's money. Being able to afford them here is a lot of factors and, um, we're basically a training ground in some cases where all students will come to work here and if you come to work in city of Wilmington, you're going to work hard. We run four to five hundred calls every twenty-four hours versus going to work with somebody else in municipalities. Where their people may run twenty calls in a twenty-four hour period. If you get paid the same money or better, so why are you gonna come here and work yourself out? And that's what it comes down to. And there are a lot of demands placed on new, on police department. I think our people do a tremendous job at responding to those demands. But that's what we're competing against, a person who wants to come here and work themselves to death or go do less work to get paid more money. Mental health piece that goes along with all of that. The demand for Chief Williams is the same way and we're seeing, um, five, ten percent call volume growth, you know, year over year. Even despite my attempts to, to manage some of the non-urgent calls, um, just putting that growth, but it is, some of the stuff is unconventional responses that fire services taking on because we're kind of like the catch-all sometimes for a number of societal things. We've assisted with and we're, we're glad to help, but it creates a tremendous amount of mental strain on our folks and, you know, like everyone in this room, we have five generations of people in the workforce and they all have different expectations about what they want out of their life, their career, their work-life balance. I'm, I'm seeing a, a, a number of people coming to me, literally I've lost eight this year, um, that have come to me and said, I can't do this job anymore. And they're anywhere from the nine-year to the twenty-five-year range. Most of those are in fifteen to twenty-year ranks that are, I can't do this job more physically or mentally. Just got an email this morning from twenty-three years of, of the department, just leaving, can't get knees and back are wore out. And, uh, that's having an impact on the pension system, you know, I was just like earlier about increased contributions of the pension system. These things are all like, they all are connected and so, you know, it's like me, you know, like I said, I've been here thirty-three years and, and I'm, I'm a nominal, people don't do that anymore. And quite honestly, what we're hearing is we can't do this job for thirty years and, uh, it needs to be more like twenty or twenty-five. That's a whole nother conversation, but to, to answer the right point, keeping people here, you have to give them something to look forward to. And so, you know, we, I know the city is doing a great job of trying to stay competitive, but that is super important when it comes to benefits and what people have to look forward to down the road. Five, thirty years, what Chief Williams said, the stress of the job, the expenses of living here and all of those things really compounded. And quite honestly, people are just, you know, finding another place to live. I'll go somewhere else to take another job, like make a little more money, a lot less stress. So this is a significant challenge in the public sector.
In the meantime, we have to have police and fire. We have to have first-class police and fire. And it, it, it's, it's a whole lot like what we saw, what the gentleman was talking about from UNCW, you know, the, the labor rates went through the roof because they had to have employees. And I don't see this as any different. And, and I know that there are employees with the city that, that, I mean, they're loyal employees. I'm talking about non-public safety employees. They're just as important. But the physical strains on public safety is, is real. I mean, the cats are raised for fire, spines. Uh, the, the, when policeman walks out the door, his family are gonna, they're gonna see him again. And those things mean a lot to me and they mean a lot to everybody and we take them for granted. But at some point, it's, it's insanity for us to go year after year after year after year, and we hear these things. And, and at some point, you just have to bite the bullet and, and give them a living wage. And then when you do that, the people that enter a lot of people coming in and you got the compression. And the guys that have been there ten years say, hell, this guy just come to work. He's making what I'm making. So it's, it's a dog chaser's tail, but we, we can't sit here year after year and keep doing this. And it's money. That's, I mean, pure and simple.
Even in, but even in places like Charlotte, the great state of Charlotte. Amazing fire department and they're very well funded, but they are doing things that are unprecedented in their history with trying to recruit, retain people. They're running the academies and hiring certified people, but also they're stealing people from smaller departments. Now luckily we've been in Charlotte, but that's how desperate Charlotte is with, uh, pretty good attention of the folks.
Well, I don't think we're unique. We're, we're certainly not unique.
We're not, we're, but.
But if something's working somewhere else, we need to take a real hard look at it.
Chief. What's the evolution of where we send it? You know, the, that starter's always been the game. And I was a squad, one guy growing up. Where we, like, my guy fell out his golf cart from, Celeb was there actually, fell out of the golf cart, um, in our neighborhood. Our truck's first one there. Yeah, ambulance, in this case, we're two more behind. But how? We seem to be put that pressure on us. We're closest, you know, which is, you know, you're trying to, you wanna help the public. But how, that seems to also take the pressure off EMT services or hospital, whatever, county, whoever provides that. How does that, how does that, um, did that start? Or is that always the case? Or how do we make sure there's enough pressure on the, the EMT services? And they're not just one, hey, it's.
They're still carrying the bulk of the, so the way, the way the system is, we're all in, every public safety agency, uh, sort of fire EMS are in the same, uh, medical response system managed by the hospital. And so we all run EMS, all the fire departments run EMS to a certain degree. Each department runs everything. We not run everything, that could be, uh, a waste of our resources. Uh, where, where we run primarily, uh, BLS, which is an EMT basic level and the hospital provides transport, which is one of the major differences between the, the services we provide and the hospital. There are medics that have the ability to transport. So, you know, if you get the pressure from the whole squad fifty-one days, you know, that's when EMS began in the fire service. But it was based on our distribution. So that, you know, one of the things about the fire department is we have excellent distribution of resources to route to any most communities, certainly on our, our side. So that just allows us to quick response, if you will, to the life-threatening emergencies. So that's why we tailor our response plans to what we consider being more life-threatening emergencies. Because we can capitalize on our distribution, be there faster and ultimately save lives. We, we do not run much lower acuity calls because we would, uh, literally our, our units would be on the road every, all the time. Because if you're like at the hospital, I need somebody to check my blood pressure or I need this. But, but what we're seeing is, is that the reasons people call nine-one-one now, for example, are like a living system. Here's when someone calls nine-one-one, it says, you know, uh, my husband or my wife has fallen and they can't get up.
Well, I can't breathe.
Yeah, but if they're not injured, it's like, well, that's not EMS call because there's no medical emergency going on. They just need somebody to help get grandma back in the bed or get her off the commode or get her out of her car from her doctor's point. But none of those things are necessarily traditional response to a fire point. When it is a need that comes to us through the community and that I want to, and dispatcher can't get up. You don't do that. And they get the phone, it translates down to the fire department. We send an engine over there, not emergency. We help someone get off the floor, off the toilet, out, out of a chair, whatever.
To, to Steve's point, so I, I wanna recall, I want you to recall that back when Buddy was here, uh, and then Steve has furthered that along. We have, uh, separated ourselves from calls that we don't need to run. And, and the emergent codes that, that Steve uses now are greater emergencies than, than those that, that, that were previously running. So they have now cut down considerably on the number of, of calls that they're running. But again, with the exponential growth in population, then it's just filling a void is what's happening.
I thought our call line by about thirty-five hundred, four thousand calls a year. We've already surpassed that. So we went from about thirteen, fourteen thousand down to about nine, nine-five hundred. We're on tracks to around twenty thousand.
Two quick questions. Mind me, I don't remember what, uh, small part, yeah, but we call the squad. Where, one, where is that? And then two, is there a room somewhere where somebody is going, uh, we need to make sure our EMT coverage is, is good, is, but getting better? You know, they seem empty since, kind of, the hospitals, ambulance, is that all hospitals, some counties?
Well, no, in, in Hanover County, in county, well, in all counties, the county is responsible for providing EMS. Hanover County chooses to allow hospitals to manage.
But they're, they're into this. So is there somewhere, is there, is there somewhere in the rhythm where we, they're trying to improve that or make that better?
The EMS.
Versus just like, hey, there's one woman there.
Well, honestly, the, the only money in the EMS business is in the transport side. So, and see, and that's kind of like, uh, you're going out picking up your customers, right? There's kind of a vending system through the nine-one-one service that, you know, this is the type of emergency you get. Initiates a response and then if it, if it warrants a, a transport, then essentially EMS is taking that patient to the hospital. It's in the system now, and so they're, they're building. Yes, they are continuing to add units. They have peak out, peak units, additional transport units.
County's trying to improve that.
The hospital manages actually the EMS system, but they're doing a very good job of it. However, there are still components of it that fall back on us to do. People should stress.
And go back to the first question, that's what we call this one, that's why I mean.
That's, so that, that's similar to this five fifty-one battle.
So how many do we end up with?
Well, we, we have three. So yes, we have, we have one station three, we have one fire station.
Hell, hell's a, maybe so there. So, we're trying to not take a fire engine out. We just send out a smaller truck, it's a short word.
Two years ago, two years ago, um, we essentially took two engines, which are traditional fire engines with our staff of three or four people, we took them out of service and took the people who were assigned to those, uh, units and put them on three smaller lightweight, uh, F-three-fifty pickup trucks. And we made them quick response vehicles or squad units. The idea behind that was to create a more efficient response model because the bulk of the call volume that we do is still EMS or other types of calls where something's not on fire. And so we implemented that program two years ago. Those are the three busiest units that we have in the, in the department now. They are, they, they run all the time.
Should we have more?
I think so, yeah. Ideally, we would put one on the campus. I talked to the chancellor about a co-located, uh, possibility where we wouldn't have to do a ten million dollar building. If it was, so their buildings there all the time, is there simply a garage bay and some, some living quarters for a couple of staff we could put in there? But I think that we, we could, we could benefit from improved response times having that. But we also spend some time on the campus responding to calls. I think that we can win-win. But yes, we could use a squad there. And there's probably a need for a squad or possibly an engine in the Marcella Street area, if you're familiar with the old Coleman complex. It's, it's still owns, we would, you know, I put it in my on-the-radar document last year, but we probably should run a squad out of there or an engine out of there just based on the approach that we're seeing and where, where the call volume is coming from and the delays and the response times that we're seeing. Those, those two areas were starting to slide on response times just because of call demand, traffic and, you know, deploying our station location. So, but even as a model for the future, quite honestly, it's, you know, trying to, uh, throw a rocket and tell me to shut up, whatever.
You must have heard me thinking.
It's a model for the future. Uh, you know, we, you know, it's no secret that five percent of what we do is, is fires. And, and you wanna maintain your ISO rating, of course, you wanna provide the best level of protection for citizens if we can. And that we have, uh, many years. However, you, you have to kind of balance the amount of resources that it takes at the ready to maintain that level of fire protection, but also to create a periphery, if you will, of smaller lightweight units that can handle a bulk of the call. And that's kind of the dilemma that the fire service is dealing with now is how do we maintain effective deployment? And, and continue to provide excellent service for the main reason we are here is to put out fires. But we also know that that's a small part of what we do every day. And so it's, how do you manage the other ninety-five percent of that?
And, and Steve in our department did a really good job of modernizing. And we're seeing that, we're seeing that across departments. The problem is, um, the volume continues to rise and the expectations continue to rise.
Right. It goes back to the mental health piece. It goes back to people. They go, you know what? I, I signed up to, to go to fires and, and save our babies and stuff. And now I'm kicking grandma off the floor to a sock and cord and RDX and alarms and people just like, that's not what I got into the business for.
Yeah.
So, you know, before we've done these, um, studies, the SOWR studies and.
We're doing one now.
You're doing one now.
Which we're gonna get to as soon as we get back to this presentation.
Just, I wanna refresh my memory. I think it was twenty twenty-two, we implemented one of the largest compensation increases.
Yes, sir.
So we're gonna, we're gonna talk about that. Yeah, refresh my memory, what percentage was on that?
Yeah, I'll get to that in a few minutes.
So last thing on that, you might get friends up that year. Is there a division of duties way to recruit? You know, somebody, there's people that wanna fight a fire, there's probably people that don't. What is that?
That is absolutely something that we are looking at. It's kind of more of less, uh, more of a European model where there are different branches of the department. You have a lot of people that are focused on education and risk production. You have your core group of firefighters and you have whatever else. But that is a leadership and philosophy and staffing and deployment and all of that.
Which, which leads again to the issue of expectations. And, and it's part of the issue that we saw with the police department several few years back. When there was an idea of defunding police, it really wasn't actually defunding police. It was trying to equip the police departments with certain skills. And, and so now we're seeing a greater call, not only in the fire service, but in the police service as well, to be able to diversify our response. And so, and, and to Chief Williams' credit, uh, he's been able to do that with the Getting Home Program. And able, he, he, he handpicked those folks to be able to, to have the skillset that was necessary to be able to deal with that. And I'm sure Chief Mason's finding the same, finding the same ability, but probably they're just not finding them in as great a numbers as I'd like to see.
Okay, um, one challenge, you mentioned wasn't five percent, fighting fire. But, um, I had a chance to visit one of these homeless camps in Woolwich. And it's dirty sometimes. Like now it's getting cold and they build a fire. And then that fire, you know, bosses independence or whatever, um, you gotta have that five percent firefighter ready to get out there. It's just another calling issue. But move right over.
I was gonna say, if we can get back to claims, presentation, that'd be helpful. Lunch is here. We'd like to get there today.
Okay, uh, this next chart is looking at public services or now public works. Most of the vacant positions of public works are in stormwater. They have sixteen, uh, streets has seven. Uh, we do continue to make some progress. We do continue to make some progress, although not as quickly as I'd like. We have a CDL training program that will train people and get their CDL. We're offering some sign-on bonuses. We offer some other career advancement opportunities. I do have some really good news to share with council this morning. In terms of our recycling and trash services, you'll see eight vacancies on there. Last recruitment class we had, we had three RTS operators and we have extended our offers to fill all remaining RTS operator positions. And they've accepted for today. So let's just, so that's good progress. And that's due to council. Last year, y'all funded a twenty dollar minimum wage for those drivers and that has paid dividends. So thank you.
So, so the, the, are there zero equipment operators? We have four vacancies in four out of four positions. So.
That's in, in streets. And Dave, you can speak to that. That's correct, right? There's four vacancies over there in streets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's no equipment operators for our rapid service?
We have interim.
We have people that can run the equipment, crew leaders run equipment. It's just that they're having to.
And to Dave's credit and to council's credit for funding the purchase of some new equipment, they've been able to do more with less. For example, last week, we all got to operate the remote control mower in stormwater, which basically allows staff to cut, cut grass a lot quicker than having to do it by hand. So what it used to take eight people to cut grass and ride away, so now we're doing with just two mowers, remote control mowers. That's also reduced our workers' comp claims for people on slopes hurting broken ankles. So we've actually had, talked to Jay yesterday, they've had zero accidents since we put those mowers into place, which is good.
Positive they are.
This next chart looks at parks and recreation vacancies. So community services, now parks and rec. Most of their vacancies are in the Parks, Landscape and Forestry Division, mainly our grounds technicians. That's our entry level position. We have seven vacant positions there. Since we pulled this data, we've had, filled the park ranger position. We've also filled a tree trimmer position. So what impact do all these vacancies have and recruiting challenges have on the organization? And this data is from a survey of public sector leaders. The top two impacts obviously are staff burnout and increased overtime and staff still having to get the work done, having to work extra hours. This, and this has a significant impact on morale. A byproduct of burnout and increased overtime is turnover. And so that's the third highest challenge that was surveyed there. While some areas have improved, these challenges still exist for our workforce in specific areas. So to get the question about why people are leaving, this chart looks at three reasons. So our top reason in twenty twenty-three why people left, they left on their own accord voluntarily. And that could have been for career change, advancement in other job, relocating to family, those sorts of things. We saw twenty percent of our workforce leave to retirements. That's thirty-two employees, which is the largest number of retirees we've had in the last five years. We've seen an increase in retirees, especially as those boomers reach retirement age. Eleven percent of turnover was for folks being terminated due to performance policy violation. That number has been consistent and has remained unchanged over the last several years. This dives into the top four voluntary reasons. And so most people leave for another job, fifty-three percent. That could be for more money, could be for career advancement. That's followed by relocations. Have some people relocate back, be close to home, family, follow a spouse. That's seventeen percent. We have seven that have just, seven percent that complete career change. I've had police officers that decided to go work for Duke Energy being linemen. We've seen a slight increase in people leaving because they're dissatisfied with the job. You've seen that increase over the last five years. It's now eight percent. And this could be due to the fact of, you know, burnt out, doing more with less, or they might just decide public service is not a career for them.
And all of these people had separation or end of employment interviews or?
Exit interviews, yes, yes. They were all offered an opportunity and participated. But these numbers, some, not everyone participates in an exit interview. They're all offered, but not everyone does. So we have to sometimes dig in and speak to the higher manager to understand why someone left so we can track that data.
Well, somebody is dissatisfied with a job could trigger, could easily trigger a career change.
It, it, some of them, exactly. So we just try to pick the primary reason. Looking at the labor trends and what we're experiencing, we're still in a very competitive environment, as the economist said this morning. Unemployment has remained low and stable over the last several years, under four percent. Still seeing an increase in jobs creation. Labor participation rates have increased slowly, but still below the pre-pandemic levels. Interesting statistic, over the next decade, the number of working age people between fifteen and sixty-five will decline in the U.S. by over three percent. That's going to exacerbate the issue of trying to find talent to fill our vacancies, especially, especially in these skilled labor positions. So staff are having to get creative to provide the same level of service. I discussed the remote control mowers. We have the ASL automated side loaders coming in with RTS. As we talked this morning, they can collect between a thousand and eleven hundred stops with one of those trucks compared to the seven fifty to eight fifty stops with a rear loader. Last thing, just briefly, Gen Z is rapidly entering the workforce, gets up ten percent of our workforce. So we need to be mindful of what their wants and needs are and motivates them. They want more flexibility, remote work. The city where it's available does offer balanced hybrid opportunities that allows that creativity and collaboration. This generation also is the ones that have a lot of side hustles. So not only are they working for us during the day, they might be working doing Uber at night or have a part-time business that they're running. They also are very interested about mental health. They care a lot about that, as Chief Mason mentioned. And so that's something that we're, we've continued to invest in over the last couple of years. All right. Next, I want to talk about applications for open jobs. So this demonstrates what I mentioned on the previous slide. There are fewer people, working age people. And as a result, we're seeing fewer and fewer job applications per opening. The data you see up here is from NeoGov, which is the applicant tracking system we use, all their customers across the country, forty-five million jobs. You'll see that year after year, there's been a decrease in the number of applications that we've been seeing per opening. This is, this mirrors what we're seeing at the city. So we're seeing about half the applications we were seeing now than we were before the pandemic. Very competitive environment. Top fact, yes.
The application we're receiving, are they? Like, where is, are they more qualified than we're seeing in twenty twenty or is it just straight net net?
It's, it's, you're seeing fewer qualified applicants now, fewer qualified applicants than were. We are made of factors. Could be experience, education, just different factors. So while we're in this competitive environment, it's real important to understand why people choose one job over the other. And as we talked about a moment ago, it's, it's still paying benefits. That's the thing that's most important to individuals reflected in this survey. The next two, well, people are looking for some job security and meaningful work. And those are two areas where I think the city does have a competitive advantage over, say, the private sector. And so I think we have an opportunity to market those areas and to try to recruit people to come work for the city. So what are we doing about all this? I've discussed a lot of, some doom and gloom and some challenges. So here's what we're doing. First thing we're doing is we were having to, we've contracted with a vendor to complete a benefits evaluation to look at our overall competitiveness of our employee benefits package. It's going to look at things like what's covered under our health plan, dental vision, what are the costs between the employer and the employees? How much are deductibles, co-pays? What benefits do our employees need? How competitive are we is real important. So we anticipate having the results of that study back in January and I'll be presenting that, those results to you at a future budget work session. The second thing is we talked about is the compensation study is being done. We're focusing on those positions that have high turnover, struggling to attract talent. We already have some preliminary data back and I will have those results for you again at a future work session so we can talk about those and come back with some recommendations. We're attending career fairs everywhere. We're going wherever we can go. We hosted our own career fair for public works and community services in August. We had over a hundred people attend that career fair. We had thirty-two of those apply for jobs onsite, extending for job offers. We've attended stuff with Care United, Fresh Chance Friday, they just did a Fresh Chance Saturday. We're at UNCW, CFCC, we're all over the region trying to recruit folks. We're reviewing our job descriptions and requirements before we post. We want to make sure that we're not disqualifying applicants that would otherwise be qualified. For example, you know, we, we could, we used to be a little more selective where we could say, all right, we need someone that has a bachelor's degree. Well, do we really need that? We have someone that has ten years of experience and a little bachelor's degree. And so we're looking at those things and posting those new requirements. So we're trying to broaden our applicant pool. Another program we put in place is our CDL training program. That is a skill that is licensed, that is very valuable. In today's economy, there's sort of the CDL drivers. And so we've created our own program, a large in park to one of Dave Mase's staff member, Mark Cox. He's put our program together. In public services alone, we've trained twelve individuals that didn't have their CDL and getting their CDL. There's actually savings to the city as opposed to sending those individuals to CFCC where we pay five thousand dollars. We can do it in-house. We've saved the taxpayers sixty-two thousand dollars already by doing this program in-house. Training and development opportunities, we continue to enhance the KSAs of our, our workforce by offering in-house training.
What does KSAs mean?
Knowledge, skills and abilities. Sorry, HR speak. Career progression, this is something that's real important to a lot of the Generation Z and just employees in general that come in the workforce. They want to see, I'm coming in, where can I go? Where can I progress? Where can I advance to? We just lost an employee in planning because we didn't, they didn't feel there was a, a career path for them as well as one in police. And so we've partnered, starting, we've had many discussions with Dave's group and others and Amy's groups about creating career paths for our employees so they can see advancement. So when they get experience and new skills, they can move up to another level. The last thing I want to mention here is policy changes. We continue to evaluate what our employees need, what are best practices and evaluate and incorporate those into our policies. For example, we've increased our additional pays for police and fire RTS employees. We've added bilingual pay. We've added a Juneteenth holiday. We've added paid parental leave several years ago. It's for families. So we're doing some things to, to continue to attract and retain our employees. Here's the slide that I want to just show up here and to thank council and the residents that have continued to make investments in our workforce. Starting in twenty-one, even during the, the pandemic, our council voted for a two and a half percent merit increase. That next year, we had a three percent merit increase and increased our minimum wage. We also had some ARPA bonuses that we gave out to staff. In twenty twenty-three, that is when we did our pretty, our biggest comprehensive study that we've done at the city where our police saw and fire saw a fourteen percent increase. Our other hourly exempt employees saw seven and a half percent increase, EMT a five percent increase. That was a significant investment. I think it was around seven and a half million dollars we invested that year in our employees. This past year, another significant investment, five percent. We did a two percent range adjustment and a three percent merit. We also increased our, our minimum from fifteen to sixteen oh seven. And then we increased our driver pay for operators to twenty dollars an hour. So as a wrap up, I just want to discuss what we're seeing on the compensation landscape as we head into the next budget process. Wages have grown as we saw this morning, four and a half percent over the last twelve months. Companies continue to fight for that scarce labor. There are signs of cooling. Wages grew, I think, five percent at the same time last year. So it's only four percent this year. Our peers, our benchmarks continue to make adjustments to their employees' compensation and our employees see that. And so we're trying to do everything we can to stay ahead of the curve, monitor what's going out there, what's going on so we can come back and make recommendations to stay competitive. Twenty twenty-four average salary budgets, this is a survey from a SHRM, which is a, a HR profession, or projected to be around four percent for twenty twenty-four. So some of the next steps, we're going to evaluate results of both our benefits evaluation and our compensation study. And then we're going to come up with some recommendations and bring both the results and recommendations back to council at an upcoming work session. So we can incorporate that into the next budget process.
Clayton, I needed those last facts that you just gave us during the campaign.
Oh, page nineteen, force investment. Yes, sir. What's he want with that? Excuse me, councilman, what was that?
I said I needed those last facts you just shared with us during the campaign.
Okay, sorry, sir, yeah.
I could have got more votes than David Joyner had you gave.
We have, we have, we have an emergent issue that's coming up in terms of, of healthcare coverage that we're providing. And, and I just want to make council aware of this simply because you may hear some discussion about it. It's an evolving issue and we, we think we've got a good handle on it. But Clayton and Mary met with UMR about our health insurance. I think y'all have some impressions coming out of that.
Yeah, so UMR, that's, they provide our health insurance to our employees. They, we're self-insured and so we use UMR to process our claims. They utilize United Healthcare as their network. A little over a month ago, we had a meeting with Jeff James from Wilmington Health. He let us know that he would not be renewing his contract with United Healthcare for various reasons. We also received word from UNC Chapel Hill Hospital that they're also in negotiations with United Healthcare. They're threatening to end their contract with them as well for the same various reasons. Employees who utilize both Wilmington Health and UNC Hospital in Chapel Hill have been getting letters to that effect. And so that's very concerning to us, obviously, because a lot of our employees use Wilmington Health. And so we've been in constant contact with Wilmington Health, UMR, United Healthcare. We had a meeting with them in person two days ago and we asked them point blank what's going on. There, there, we feel very confident that there is going to be a resolution. They say this stuff happens all the time behind the scenes, you know, patients just don't see about it. This one's very public. But we feel very confident. Regardless of how confident we feel, we're still have a plan B. So we're working with our broker to, and we have some solutions we can implement, we think, pretty quickly if negotiations fail so that there will be no impact to our employees and the families. But I just want to make sure y'all are aware of that.
And there's a little bit of time here. So you, the Wilmington Health, the contract with UMR would expire in August. So we do have a little bit of lead time here to work with them. UNC Health System is, is more immediate, is April. But she was very confident and I'm, I, I want to believe her, that they were actually about to reach negotiations with them. So, you know, that's a large network for UMR to lose anyway, when you think about UNC Health System. And so we feel good about that one and we'll continue to work on the Wilmington Health because we know, we laid it out there. I mean, we have a clinic downstairs that's run by Wilmington Health. So that this was a huge issue for us. So we're going to continue to work with them, but we feel, I feel a lot better coming out of that meeting this week than, than we did prior to that and the conversations.
We'll continue to monitor this situation. If it gets to February where it has not been resolved, we'll start taking some steps otherwise. Mr. Mayor, that's all we have for the morning presentation. We have a lunch set up for you downstairs on the first floor in the cafeteria. And so if you would like to return to that location and eat some lunch. Back in session, manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I went and bragged on her, said we had to bring her up to the table. Suzanne Gooding is gonna, this has been Suzanne's baby in terms of budget office. She's been overseeing the CIP for us. Probably one reason we're all going to miss her so much. But she's gonna do a presentation for us today. You will recall that I said it's at the top of the program that we are talking about looking at a five-year CIP. So this is going to be an important cog in the, in the process. Suzanne?
Okay, so today I'm going to provide the, the background and a direction board. And then I will hand it over to our finance director to go into a funding strategy. Here we go. Okay, so this graphic gives a bit of history of the city's capital improvement plans and, and what we've invested in those plans over the years. We've had a capital improvement plan for years before even FY oh five, but wanted to give you some of the details going back into history. Each plan, of course, takes a commitment from council and then necessary funding to support the plan. In FY thirteen, as you can see, it was the first year that the city dedicated a tax rate towards the multi-year plan. And so, and that continued with the transportation bond, the parks bond, and even the FY eighteen multi-year plan. So dependent on what's going on with debt capacity and the, the availability of general fund, fund balance, those tax rates change. So that's why it's not like one, you know, the, the cents and the amounts sometimes aren't always aligned. But it really was what's going on at the time with debt capacity and the general fund and what do we need to? And what do we need to support the next five years? If you look at F Y twenty-four, we were able to use debt capacity and general fund contribution to go forward with a one-year plan that included the downtown property acquisition without any tax increase. So just to provide some history, we wanted you all to have this information. I can make this work. Okay. Yeah. Thank you. So in F Y twenty-four, a multi-year plan was delayed with the intent to focus on project delivery of those active funded projects as well as to come back to you with a funding strategy for capital maintenance and preservation projects. So at the last January work session, we had identified over 170 million in capital maintenance and preservation needs and over 400 million in identified infrastructure needs. So just to give you a quick terminology reference, when I say infrastructure, I kind of mean those traditional capital improvement projects that impact the community. So these are typically standalone projects. Think fire stations or downtown Greenway Trail, really those city building projects instead of those maintenance type of projects. Next slide, please. Thank you. So prior to F Y eighteen, most of the pop-up projects and pop-up projects are those not planned, but they, they have been identified and the need has been shown that we need to fund them. So prior to F Y eighteen, the pop-up projects tended to be more maintenance-related projects. With the five-year plan that started in F Y eighteen, the C I P focus was maintenance because of those identified maintenance needs. But then we saw a shift of those pop-up needs being more of those infrastructure-type projects. So what we're looking to do is find an equilibrium, not only to maintain and preserve our existing assets, but also to fund those infrastructure projects that are what we think of as city building type projects.
And this goes back to the, what the economists, the appointed economists made this morning was that as, as you get a larger population, you have to start focusing on not only the new stuff, but the maintenance thereof. And that's what we're finding ourselves in.
The next slide. In the F Y twenty-five budget development, staff would like to recommend a new funding strategy to address the long-term maintenance and preservation needs of the city. We've asked project directors to submit a five-year capital maintenance spend plan. Those project directors do rely on assessment tools to help guide the prioritization of those maintenance needs. And as an organization that relies on our human capital, we need to also ensure that we have the staff capacity to deliver projects and utilize the funding allocated towards maintenance. This will allow the C I P infrastructure projects to compete against each other instead of with those long-term maintenance needs. Next slide. And so this slide just gives you a reference of some of the asset management tools staff utilize to guide the prioritization of capital maintenance projects. So these tools are often provided by third parties to give a comprehensive assessment of the asset in question. You've heard our public services director, Dave Maze, mentioned P C I when discussing street rehab. That's pavement condition index. So this type of specific and detailed information is invaluable to making objective decisions about maintenance needs throughout our community. The same can be said for the other tools. So staff have for years utilized a riverwalk structural assessment, bridge condition assessment, stormwater drainage, comprehensive plans to guide them in recommendations and actions around maintenance. In the future, staff have to complete the facility condition assessment as well as embark on a full park and trail condition assessment. Next slide. So we ask project directors to identify their maintenance spend plan capacity, given the maintenance needs out there as well as staff ability to deliver projects. They identified 87 million for maintenance and preservation needs over the next five years and 400 million in infrastructure projects with more submittals being currently reviewed. So at this point, we have a total identified need of 487 million for the next five years. So these give you an idea of some of the major maintenance and preservation projects we're talking about. The dark green, top three rows are funded through financing and the general fund. The three projects at the bottom are funded through transfers from enterprise funds. So as you can see, there are a lot of variety of maintenance and preservation projects reflecting the assets that the city maintains. So within those projects, you can see the type of maintenance and preservation activities that occur ranges from playground and picnic shelter replacements, repairing bridges and structural riverwalk repairs to planned generator replacements at numerous city-owned facilities. And even within one of our funds, like streets and sidewalks, there's just a variety of different activities that occur. It's not all street rehab. It could be, you know, the pavement markings or trail preservation, sidewalk gap, closure. I don't know the word for that, the, the gap fill.
Like the municipal golf course. We have a big irrigation project. So that's, that's a situation where it just, you know, it's larger than their, than their, what they have in their savings.
Right. So this, um, this project is really for ongoing maintenance, bigger capital needs. The golf irrigation is a standalone project that we're looking at because it's just a lot bigger. Yeah. Dylan, next slide. So moving forward, we're looking at capital maintenance projects through a different lens. You'll still see a capital improvement plan, but just know that we're reviewing those detailed spend plans on the maintenance side. And we'd like to propose a dedicated tax rate that will grow over time and prioritize those maintenance activities as needs change. For the infrastructure-type projects, it's the same funding strategy that you've seen before with financing, debt capacity and property tax being the main funding sources as well as enterprise fund transfers between their operating to their capital and parking, stormwater and golf. And this will allow those infrastructure projects to really compete against each other. And they're kind of the more exciting projects. Those are the ones that, you know, change the landscape of the community instead of having them compete with maintaining an asset that's not, you know, not as exciting when the, when we're talking about it. So next slide. Go back one, Dylan. Thank you. So at this point, further prioritization will occur and staff plan to have a more detailed project proposal for council to review in January. We suggest having a dedicated tax rate to support capital maintenance needs. The preliminary data is showing a two to four cent tax rate increase. And Jennifer Moretti, the city's finance director, is going to now go into more detail on that funding strategy.
As Tony opened up this morning, said we have no money.
She heard one thing.
That's right. That's it. Funding strategy. There is none. So I'm going to talk more about what our staff committee has been working on with the funding strategy for the next multi-year C I P. This will be our third multi-year C I P plan we've done since 2013. And this one will be covering the fiscal years 2025 to 2029. So the funding plan we're working on covers a capital maintenance plan and a capital infrastructure plan. We are moving towards having separate funding strategies for the maintenance-type projects versus the infrastructure-type projects. This will allow us to have better prioritization without competing for the same available funding. In the past, we've always had these combined in one multi-year plan. So the capital maintenance plan covers projects that we manage to keep our current assets in good condition. We often refer to these as bucket projects due to how we were funding these by allocating a lump sum amount each year of the C I P plan into a fund, a bucket. And that is what the departments would use to meet their capital maintenance needs. A lot of this maintenance is not considered long-term improvements. And so it's not something that we would finance over a 20-year financing. So it becomes a struggle in taking what we can push out to a financing and what we have to cash fund for the shorter-term maintenance needs. We want to move into the direction of having a dedicated funding source to allow for cash funding these types of maintenance needs. And there are several maintenance projects that do meet the long-term strategy of financing and will continue to do those with our 80-20 debt-to-cash financing with the current tax revenue allocated to the debt service fund, which is now 8.25 cents of that total 39 and a half cent tax rate. The capital infrastructure plan is for new infrastructure-type projects. These are long-term assets that we will continue to finance with our traditional 80-20 financing model. Getting into more of the capital maintenance plan, the committee requested submissions from the departments on what they see as their capital maintenance needs over the next five-year period. And we received a total of 87.7 million dollars of identified maintenance needs for the next five years. This includes projects from our enterprise funds that are not funded or financed through the tax rate generally, but through the accumulation of the fee revenues as we talked about this morning.
Plan, park and funds, that point three million or three?
Point three, so 300,000. For the general fund capital maintenance needs, the cash-funded projects are those smaller repairs, replacements that don't prolong the life of the asset long-term, but do keep it in good condition until a full replacement is needed and planned, which could then be a finance project. To provide for the cash funding, we are working toward putting in place a dedicated tax revenue for this. This allows the city to utilize the assessment tools Suzanne reviewed with you and be proactive with our maintenance and not having to be reactive when an asset condition becomes poor and we find ourselves sometimes spending more money just to fix the problem instead of keeping it in a good condition. If we were to dedicate one cent of the tax towards this, it currently would provide about 2.2 million a year and then grow annually as the growth of the tax rate grows. This would allow more maintenance to be funded as that grows. We are currently working on prioritizing the submissions and obtaining more details on what the requested funding would provide. This is a new process for us as we move away from the lump sum funding in a bucket to being more specific on what benefits the funding will result in. We do have capital maintenance projects that do extend the life of the asset long-term. And these projects would be financed with our 80-20 debt method utilizing limited obligation bonds. Examples of these are our street resurfacing projects, some of our rehabilitation with brick streets and sidewalk rehab. Our capital infrastructure plan includes the infrastructure-type projects such as new construction of facilities, long-term repair, replacement of assets as, as a bridge, we had a couple of those in our, in our plan. And a lot of the transportation-type improvements that we have needs for. We have a long list of unfunded needs that total about $400 million. As Suzanne mentioned, we are working on assessing and prioritizing these projects to recommend for this next five-year C I P plan. This includes updating our cost estimates on these projects, research some grant opportunities that may be available for us and any other funding sources that we may be able to leverage. These projects are financed through our 80-20 debt financing model, which we use limited obligation bonds or general obligation as we've done with the transportation and park funds in the past. When we have projects come up that need funding, our funding sources for the cash-funded costs are revenue from the dedicated tax and use of our fund balance. We also look at what debt capacity we have available to use towards these projects that can be funded without increasing taxes to provide the revenue to cover the debt payments. In your packet behind the first tab from my presentation this morning is the debt capacity presentation that I gave you all in detail last year. That provides more information in detail on how debt capacity is created and how we've been able to fund a lot of projects through that. Any positive changes in our projections of financing with timing being later? Financing amounts or interest rates being lower than we projected is what creates this debt capacity. And currently as we stand, we have allocated all available debt capacity with this year's plan, purchase of this building as well as our C I P plan for this year, mostly maintenance-related projects. So we do not have this capacity with this next plan that helps bring that tax rate down. Here is where I'm showing you what capital plans we've done since 2013 and the tax rate that's been adjusted when we adopted these plans. These tax rates have been adjusted with the reappraisals accordingly to be revenue neutral. So you might recall approving a higher tax adjustment when these plans were adopted compared to what it's showing now. As you can see, we've accumulated and utilized quite a bit of debt capacity since fiscal year 2020 to include the ability to purchase 929 North Street properties, which we did not increase the overall tax rate. But as mentioned previously, we did have to shift the tax rate and move 1.12 cents of the tax rate to the debt service fund from the general fund to help make this happen. So the allocation of the current tax rate of 39 and a half cent, 8.25 cent in total comes to the debt service fund for those debt service payments and cash funding needs. 31.25 cents goes to the general fund, which one cent of that is allocated towards portable housing. So just to recap, our strategy for how we were able to finance 929 North Front Street properties, this was a $68 million purchase we made without increasing the tax rate. We did this with a variation of different funding sources. This included utilizing available debt capacity. We transferred eight and a half million of the fund balance from the general fund over to the debt service fund. We had an earlier sale of a limited obligation bond that we had projected a higher interest rate than what that came in. So that lower rate again created that capacity that we allocated for this. We also had a bridge project that we were recommending to put with the 24 C I P plan. We did push that off, which allowed that capacity to be used for this. And as you recall, we had proposed a $6 million street rehab budget for 24 and council had requested we move that up to 8 million. So that 2 million also came from pushing this bridge project up. And then we also had the shift of the 1.12 cents that allowed more tax revenue coming into the debt service fund. And when we were projecting, working through our budget process last year, as Laura mentioned, we get numerous updates from the tax office on our new projections for tax revenue. And so we were able to project a little bit more tax revenue coming in and allocate that towards the financing of this. And we also, knowing that we were going to, as part of this deal, have a three-year lease with P P D, that lease revenue that we received for these three years is coming over to the debt service fund that also makes this happen. The financing strategy that we used included three series of debt. This was taxable and tax exempt. As we knew we were having private use in this building, we do have 50% of that $68 million as taxable debt and 34 million as tax exempt. This allowed us to do a bank loan with a variable rate that's callable. So we can pay that down at any time without a prepayment penalty. And then we had our limited obligation bonds. And so this is just a breakdown of what that looks like. So 23.8 million is with that taxable variable rate. So what that means is it's a higher taxing rate, a higher interest rate that we're paying. And so the idea is to sell some properties and pay that down. That helps our debt capacity increase as well as our debt margin decrease.
Is that interest rate fluctuating at all?
Oh yeah, it's being variable, it fluctuates constantly. So with our surplus property, again, we talked about from the very beginning with this process that the proceeds from the sale of the properties that we were vacating, as well as the two properties that we acquired with this purchase, the proceeds from the sales of these properties would be used to pay down that variable debt, the 23.8 million. Again, that builds back some capacity that is used towards future plans to keep that tax rate lower to fund all the projects that we have needs for. It also lowers our debt margin. With the proceeds above that, the plan was to establish a maintenance and capital fund for this building to be able to maintain and respond to those long-term capital improvements for this building to keep it in a great condition that it's in when we purchased it. So for the next steps, staff's going to continue evaluating the priorities of the projects we received from the departments, continuing to update the estimated cost to make sure that we're bringing true costs to council when we recommend the plan. Again, researching grant opportunities and other funding sources that are out there to help bring these projects to reality. And we plan to bring this back to council at your January work session. We'll bring back the five-year capital maintenance plan as well as a five-year capital infrastructure plan. With that, we'll also bring back the tax rate adjustment that will be recommended to meet this funding strategy. Again, having a dedicated tax for the capital maintenance side and then what the tax adjustment will need for the next five-year capital financing plan.
Jennifer.
Yes, sir.
Is the, is the thought process, I'm trying to read kind of into it, is if you do, if you go to this new route with the capital piece, capital, funding it all, is to kind of get away from doing like a big park fund?
No, sir. No, because those are all our, more of our newer projects. We have a lot of transportation improvements when we complete all the park assessment and studies. There, there's needs there that are long-term needs, long-term improvements, maybe, you know, replace some new facilities, add some facilities. Those could be part of another parks bond. These are more of your, your maintenance on a current assets to keep those going in good condition to where they won't be.
The capital infrastructure?
Oh, I'm sorry, capital infrastructure, yes. And my mind is capital maintenance. Capital infrastructure would be parks bond or a transportation bond.
But that's what I'm saying, that, this would kind of take the choice of that.
That could be one funding strategy.
Yeah, yeah, as I said, our infrastructure plan, we do either with limited obligations or general obligation bonds.
You're talking about this tax rate change?
That is for the capital maintenance side of it, just the maintenance. So we have a dedicated tax funding for the maintenance. And then just as we traditionally have done, when we plan out our five-year CIP, this is the tax rate adjustment it's going to take to meet this recommended plan, which includes the infrastructure. If we don't do a general obligation bond, we would do a limited obligation bond, still needing a tax rate for it. But the dedicated one would be in place. If we do one cent, that one cent always goes towards maintenance and that grows. And so all of our cash needs for our maintenance projects would come out of that fund. All of our longer need projects would come out of our 80-20 financing with debt.
So the entirety, you wrapped mine around, the entirety of the proposed increase, whether it be two to four, four cents, which represents a 5 to 10% total increase rate, that would be dedicated solely to, to capital capital maintenance and capital infrastructure.
Both.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, instead of having one plan that has both mix of maintenance projects and infrastructure projects, we're going to look at having, let's say, one cent, so our maintenance projects that are cash-funded, they're going to be funded with this one. Those long-term, like street rehab, those are long-term maintenance needs, but they are long-term, so they can be financed. That portion, along with other infrastructure-type projects, would be in the traditional CIP plan that you have seen. It just allows us to have a funding mechanism to take care of our current assets of maintenance needs with a dedicated rate. So we're not always coming back and saying, you know, we have all these maintenance needs and we have this, we're, we're only going to go up two cent on the tax rate, so we have this amount of money to allocate towards all of them. It lets us look at both of them separately and, and come back with a recommendation for, for both sides of it.
I, I like, I'm trying to still, so the capital, just talk about the capital piece. When something goes, so repaving a road is which?
Repaving, repaving is a maintenance, but we would finance it like a long-term infrastructure project.
Suppose?
But your slurry or reclamationite that he does, that's a maintenance side of it because it's not long-term.
Because I'm trying to use a physical, independence out there between Carolina Beach and River, a major project. Somebody said 20, what they, that, does that fall in there or is it completely off the radar that you?
That's the infrastructure piece to it. So that would be the infrastructure bucket as opposed to maintenance.
Just prioritize things as a good, that's, that'd eat up a lot of it if that was prior to, okay, thanks.
Yeah, another one, maintenance-wise, number of roofs that you need replaced, HP systems or cooling systems, those compete for the, the new things that we can't see. We end up sometimes doing the new stuff and deferring maintenance too long on the things that would be more beneficial to them.
Hands and force, so.
And that's all I have. If anyone has any questions or questions come to you later on, let us know. We'll provide more information on it. This is a new process, so working with the departments and getting them to think differently as well as coming forward with a recommendation, trying to do better as we go forward.
Be around, but I'll, yes, so. Really demonstrate. Examples, pictures, make it very understandable.
Do, thank you.
Next up, we've got a discussion of the strategic plan. You will remember that we've had strategic plans before. The period under which the strategic plan would operate has long since passed, the five-year period of the previous strategic plan. Got two things with this. One is that we're trying to set strategies for where we will spend money and spend effort in order to accomplish the objectives that you won't see done. But please understand that whereas our last strategic plan, everything we did to it, this strategic plan is different. This one is designed to put forward initiatives that council wants to see accomplished over the course of the five-year period in addition to regular service delivery. So for example, I'll use Dave's department. Picking up trash is not going to be tied to the strategic plan. However, if Dave wanted to open a landfill.
I was going to say, hey, that might be a bad example.
Well, that's the reason I'm using it. Open a landfill, then that might be a part of his strategic objectives. So again, strategic objectives are over and beyond the normal spend, the more normal daily operation. They are designed for council to get something, get, get, have them accomplished within a five-year period. So it's a little different than the previous strategic plan, and I wanted you to remember that. We have been through the governance committee with this presentation and they have blessed it and says, take it on to council. And we hope to be able to let you get familiar with it today. And we'll be back to you in January to talk about input and adoption.
I think you just did the whole presentation.
Thank you.
Game over. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor of town, members of council. I am way excited to be here to talk about the strategic plan, especially given, I'll start this, when we say there's no money, a strategic plan helps with that. Because as the city manager mentioned, this is about how do we do things differently as a city? And how do we, over the next five years, look to be more competitive, more efficient, and, and look at our overall service delivery and how we respond to the public. And as you can also tell, strategic plan gets me very excited even after lunch. So I'm going to try to get our enthusiasm up on this. I do want to start by just a, a general notion of, so we're all on the same page, is what is strategic planning? And I've, I've taught whole courses on this, so I'm going to size it down to three bullets, right? A strategic plan allows us to have that focus, both on our community and on our staff and on our city. And that's really important because we get sometimes lost in the day-to-day. How do we do things every day, you know, and that's important. But we really need to start thinking about what does that future look like and how, how can we continue to do things differently? Especially given, you know, limited resources, limited humans, as we think about the employee base and those kinds of things. A plan also allows stability and opportunities for those who live, work, and build their businesses here. So it really, it shows them as a count, you know, what we as a city and you as city council and the city manager are hoping to accomplish over the next five years. It is a living, breathing document. That's what I tell everybody. Over the next five years, council will change this. So what is ultimately approved by y'all will, will ebb and flow because we'll bring it back to you on a yearly basis for review. So you know, what's important now may not be important three years from now. As someone who was managing a strategic plan during COVID, I can tell you COVID blew up my strategic plan. And we had to look at it and think about how do we do things differently after that. And so, but it, but it allows us to create that contract with the community. And it does, it sets that common set of goals for all of us. You know, one of the things that Clayton talked about was that sense of purpose. Our staff is looking for that. And a strategic plan and things like that and our values allow us to connect with our employees at another level. There's a reason that most of us work in government. Some believe it's because we can't get jobs anywhere else. That might be true, I don't know. But a lot of it is because we do believe in our communities and what we do. And so sometimes having this base allows us to connect with those who are in the front and the work that they do. So a little bit about strategic planning. So Tony talked a little bit about this. The original plan was before my time, but it was adopted by city council on June 21st, 2016. You know, it included six focus areas. As you can see, it was only a three-year plan at the time. I tried to tread carefully here because I didn't want to talk bad about the previous plan because it's a wonderful plan. But when you go back and look at it, it was very large. It had a lot of specific things in it. As Tony mentioned, it was very tailored to departments. And so it was almost too large to be meaningful, right? If you get something that's too big, how do you accomplish it, right? And it, it had no implementation plan. It's a living, breathing document. And so one of the things we've been working on with the new one is not only how are we going to get councils to, to tell us what they want to do with the plan or what you want in it. We're on the background of this right now, I'm working on how am I implementing it, right? How are we taking this document and actually going to do something with it? And so there really wasn't an implementation plan back then. It was mainly left to departments to implement. And then it used, it was mainly used in the budget process. As a former budget director, I'll tell you, people would squeeze anything into a strategic plan to get money. And so, he's laughing because it is so true. And so it was mainly used in those processes. And so as we designed this, we thought of that. You know, one of the things departments will see this year is we're not going to ask them to tie their, their request to the strategic plan. It's not about squeezing things in there, right? It's about strategy. So the proposed plan in front of you, it includes five key focus areas. We, we talked about them last year. We were trying to be really consistent and very manageable. And so a little bit about the structure of it, within each of the five focus areas, there are three objectives and three initiatives under each of those objectives. And those are very attainable. We were trying to be very specific and manageable, like I said, they'll change over time. It has a strategic focus on moving the city forward. How can we, we be better, smarter, more efficient? How can we better use our resources? It's not about new things necessarily and, you know, throwing money at them. It's about how can we do business differently? And then we've been working on implementation plan as we move forward, bringing more information on that. Some of my thunder was lost because I was going to be so excited to introduce Nicole, who I am way excited, who will be the face of this, not me anymore. And she's going to help us as we roll this plan out. So thinking about the plan, a little bit of background of this real quick. We did have a contract with TransPro to write the plan. They've been around, they're going to come back and help us with some performance measures. We did conduct a community survey with some focus groups, interviewed councils. You know, as you recall, we, we've come back last year in January to get some feedback on the focus areas, which we took back. We've worked with staff on the development of those objectives and initiatives. And then we did bring it to governance two months in a row for their feedback and discussion. And so that's how we ended up here today. So if you go in your packet, we did provide you a copy of the plan if you want to follow along. I'm not going to go into great detail today. I just want to give a high overview and then allow you to, to go back and think about it a little bit. We'll come back in January and talk about it and get, get some more specific feedback. But I did want to go through each area. I do want to start by making sure that we're all familiar, you know, what, what do we mean by some of these terms? So a key focus area, there's, you know, kind of goal areas, we have five of them. And then with each of those areas, we have what's called an objective. And objective is at high level, what are we trying to accomplish? You know, what are, what are we looking at? You'll see that they're written very broadly in the plan. And that's because they're going to encompass several initiatives underneath it. Because that initiative is really about what are those specific activities that we're going to do to ensure that we meet those objectives. And then lastly, you know, how do we report our success? And so what's not included right now, performance measures? That's the next phase of this after council approves it. We'll go on to put performance measures in that we'll report to city council twice a year. And we'll create a public dashboard that goes with it. But I wanted to make sure, when I do terminology, sometimes I get too far ahead and want to make sure we're on, on the same page. So this is also included in your packet in the, just Laura did a great job with the graphics in terms of just kind of putting it out there so you can see what are those different focus areas. So let's get going. So the first focus area is in housing and neighborhoods. And it is on page, if you wanted to follow along, just on page five, thank you, Laura. And this really looks at our neighbor, our neighbor, our neighborhoods and, and not, I don't want to say affordable housing, but also inclusive and affordable housing. So it's focused on, as you can see, the availability and affordability of quality housing options. And that's not necessarily just looking at new stock, but also how are we maintaining the stock that we have. It also, some of our initiatives focus on reviewing city policies and codes. It looks at our collaboration across the, the county and the state. It's all about fostering vibrant neighborhoods, right? How are we providing resources in those areas? Because we know that Wilmington has some very unique neighborhoods across the area. And how are we, how are we creating those neighborhoods in a thoughtful manner? And then public engagement, how are we bringing city services to those neighborhoods and to those communities? And so that's kind of the focus area in, in housing and neighborhood. Yes, sir.
How do we, how do we create the affordability?
Well, I don't have that answer yet. I mean, I think we've been working through that as a city in multiple ways. I think what's written in here allows us over the next few years to think a little more creative about it, right? Like looking at, you know, I'm, I'm a big fan of benchmarking. What are others doing that we're not doing that's out there? And so these, as we implement this, we'll have cross-departmental staff teams that will look at that. And so right now, we usually say it's just a housing problem, right? Well, this could be, you know, someone in another department may have a great idea about how to, how to do this. And so the strategic plan allows us to look at that.
Like?
You're welcome. All right. And so the next area is transportation and infrastructure. And this is really about developing that efficient and accessible and sustainable multimodal transportation network and city infrastructure. It's got a focus on improving our transportation options and reducing congestions. And it's not just about the automobile, right? And our roads, it's about the alternative methods as well. So looking at improving our roads, our sidewalks, even our trails and greenways. And it's also looking at maintaining and improving the city's infrastructure. And so there's a, an objective in there about maintaining the assets we have and looking at that from a sustainable option. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me. Otherwise, I'll keep going. All right. All right. The next focus area is public safety. Or I actually like to call it safety. It's because we all know that safety is not just the responsibility of our chiefs. It's also a citywide responsibility as well. But this focus area is about creating a safe, healthy, and engaged community. When we met, I will say, there was, you know, with the team to go through this, there were a couple of things that came out. We made sure that the strategic plan focused on them. And that was number one, on reducing violent crime. How do we look at doing that differently? Because again, that's not just a police department issue. That's a, how are we taking care of our, you know, housing standards? How are we looking at finding ways to involve our youth? And so it's really looking at a holistic approach to some of these in terms of long-term solutions. Vehicular safety, we don't often think of that when we think about public safety. Looking at our accidents and making sure we can improve the safety in our roadways, emergency management. As I learn and live on a coastal community, how important that is. And so resiliency is also part of this. Looking at expanding and continuing our work associated with people experiencing homelessness or also looking at drug addiction. And so there's some initiatives associated with our partnerships there. And some of the work the city is already doing to look to expand that or try new pilots. Looking at our quality of life, the minimal housing standards, talking to them, there's great opportunity there, right? Because it's not just about enforcement. How are we creating opportunities to enhance our housing stock? And make sure it's, we get to it before it gets to that level, right? And then our youth involvement is another piece that we talked about. And that gets back into all of these things, right? Reducing violent crime and some of the other pieces. All right. Our next focus area is organizational excellence. It's achieving organizational excellence. There's not much more to say on that. This is really focused internally. And it's focused on our employees. So one of the big objectives is recruiting, developing, and retaining a diverse workforce. And how are we doing those things? Looking at our efficient use of resources to making sure that our employees have the tools they need to do the job that they do, but also that we're doing it responsibly. Employee safety is a big part of this, looking at a more comprehensive citywide safety program. Customer service, that's another large initiative under here. Looking at not just our record, you know, how our documentation, but also looking at potentially long-term or 3-1-1 system. How are we communicating and providing a standard weight? And so that's a big piece of this. And then improving accessibility of services. So looking at our website design, looking at language barriers that go along with it and those kinds of things. And so this is really about how do we improve our services to the community and across the organization. All right, last but certainly not least is our economic development and cultural vibrancy, which is really looking at our economic growth, job creation, and our culture. And it's really focused on attracting and retaining businesses. Notice it's not just about bringing in, but it's also how do we keep? It's also looking at small businesses, our MWBEs and those pieces. It also has some objectives looking around regional partnerships. And one of my favorite objectives in there is looking at our city's position as a nationally recognized entertainment, cultural, and tourism destination. So how are we doing that, right? That's a big piece of who we are with the Riverwalk and downtown. Looking at Riverwalk improvements, looking at downtown parking. And so this is really focused on our economic development and that kind of growth. All right. So what's next? And I went through that really quick, so I apologize, but it's all there. We will collect feedback from council if you have any today. I don't necessarily expect you to. But what we're hoping to do is bring back the plan to your first meeting in January to collect some feedback from you and then potentially bring it back at another meeting for approval. We as staff are more than willing in between now and then to meet with you if you have specific ideas or thoughts or questions. Or you wanna say, wait a minute, Mary, this isn't in there. And I can explain maybe the thought process, why it is, or maybe we need to add it. But we are here to help answer any questions you may have about it. And then while we do all this, we'll continue to work on the performance measures and our implementation plan so that we can be, once it's approved, ready to roll so that as of July 1st, our strategic plan is up and running. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Strategic plan is contained in your packet. In particular, there's a fold-out section that is incredibly helpful. It involves, it reduces it down to one page, believe it or not. It's very long and it's very small.
You may need my readers.
Very small print. But it gives you an idea of from where we want to start with regard to the strategic plan. And it talks not only about the objectives, but the initiatives that we're going to take and put into place over the five-year period. As Mary mentioned, this is a living, breathing document. It's gonna change as situations change. But I would ask that each of you take a look at, especially this document and especially this one page, to determine whether or not you think we're headed in the right direction. And if we're not, then if you can get that feedback to us ahead of time, that's great. If not, feedback to us in January. But we do think that this is a really unique opportunity to be able to coordinate the CIP with the strategic plan. And of course, as I mentioned earlier, the departmental business plans that are being done on a three-year basis. So if you would take a look at it on Christmas Eve, if you've got nothing better to do, you might wanna pull it out. You might wanna pull it out during football Thanksgiving Thursday. But if you would at least take a look at it and then we'll have it, we'll calendar for further discussion. Thank you.
Who's on Safe Flight?
Dennis. Come on up, Dennis.
I'm not doing it.
We're going to let Dennis take us through a presentation on Safe Flight. We've had a good deal of questions about this. This is a program that, as most of you know, we get very little money out of. We actually have to, we have to put pay to be able to keep it in place. And it does benefit the school system tremendously. Which I end, I must say that our friends at the county, when they were approached several years ago and said, will you share in the cost of this so that you can get more revenue to the county schools? They said, yes, we will. And they have been great partners ever since then. I wanna say that they stepped up. But the issue is, of course, how does the program work? Where does the revenue go? And then what benefit does the city derive out of it? So Dennis has put together a very nice presentation on it. Dennis, I'm gonna let you walk through it.
Thank you very much, Tony.
You're more than welcome, Dennis.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. As Tony mentioned, this Safe Flight program has been in place since 2000. Sorry.
You gotta push it that way.
Today, we'll just talk about the program in general, talk about some of the financials, look at the locations and some analysis that was requested. The general purpose of the Safe Flight program is to reduce the fatal and serious injury crashes, typical of the T-bone type crashes. If somebody's going straight and somebody does not stop in the 90-degree direction, normally that could be driver's side, you know, your vehicle's got the driver right now. So we're really trying to focus in on those angle crashes and the reduction of those. It provides photo enforcement, which is legal in the state of North Carolina by general statute. So Wilmington elected to install the program and operate the program here. And talking to the current state traffic engineer and previous state traffic engineers, every time I see them, it's, you know, they thank the city of Wilmington for fighting the good fight and keeping this program running. So, but it provides this continuous, like it says, accurate, unbiased enforcement of vehicles entering intersections on red. I don't think that level of enforcement would be realistically feasible with a sworn officer at, you know, at 13 intersections, we have 13 cameras. So I think, you know, balancing the cost of what we're providing with what it actually would cost to have a police officer providing that same level of service. It does, it issues violation, traffic violations for vehicles entering intersections during the red interval. So this photo enforcement is supported by the United States Department of Transportation, federal highways, you know, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, National Safety Council, the Governor's Highway Safety Association. They all have comments on using photo enforcement to supplement, you know, our police departments, our public safety officers. On the city's website, in the traffic engineering page, we have a video of how the Safe Flight system works. Don't know if we can select this. Is there a way to play that video?
Yeah. Is it embedded in there?
Oh, sorry. Dylan, you got it? So on that webpage, it's a lot of the same things we're talking about today. A video was prepared. That is it. Dylan, thank you.
Since 2000, the city of Wilmington has deployed red light safety cameras at 13 locations in Wilmington to help change driver behavior, prevent the number of red light runners. My name's Don Barrett, the city's administrator for the Safe Flight program. One of the biggest benefits from the Safe Flight program is that we're seeing intersections have had historically high red light runts. And dramatically reduced red light runts after the installation and installation. Violation and crash data shows that the program is working. 23rd and Market Street saw a 67% decrease in T-bone collisions. Red light running related collisions dropped 87% in New Center and Market.
Absolutely, the areas, the locations that have Safe Flight installed, the number of crashes is reduced.
This video will provide a brief overview of how the Wilmington Red Light Safety Camera program works. Red light safety cameras operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week. When a driver approaches and enters the intersection after the light is turned red, the camera captures two still images and a 12-second video of the event. The still images and video are then securely and wirelessly transferred to American Traffic Solutions where they are given an initial review. During this review, the images and video are checked for quality and the registered owner of the vehicle is identified. If ATS reviewers determine that a violation has occurred, the images and video are forwarded to the Wilmington Traffic Safety Department where they are again reviewed by a designated the Wilmington Red Light Safety Camera program.
People have a misconception that the machine is at some time where it just fits out. Common misconception, the machine is collecting data, there are series of commands they have to do that. Check it to make sure it's accurate and make sure the violation that occurred is valid.
Ultimately, the Wilmington Red Light Safety Camera program employee will determine whether or not a notice of citation is issued or if the event is rejected. If the event is approved, the vehicle owner will receive the notice of citation in the mail with a secure PIN and violation number that will allow them to review the images and video on the line. The vehicle owner will then have the option of disputing the violation, transferring the liability, or paying the fine either online, over the phone, or by mail.
There's problems with the fact that when these crashes introduce injuries and, and they have, that's the biggest thing most people like to do. It's not just to change that drive, it's to understand that. I can move traffic signals, they're going to change the act of where we're gonna stop or where.
The city of Wilmington reminds you to stop on red. A life you save could be your own.
Thank you, Dylan. So just to talk about the financing a little bit, about how this works. In Wilmington, face value of a citation is $50. By general statute, I believe, we have to pay the New Hanover County School Board 90% of the face value. So right off the bat, they're getting $45 out of every citation. Our current rate for each citation to the vendor is $22.50, $22.50 per paid citation. So we're, for every citation, we're at a loss of $17.50. There's a cost recovery percentage there that I would request somebody from finance possibly to answer. I'm not quite sure I understand that. But of that, the loss to the cost of the program, like Tony mentioned, is shared 50/50 with the city, up to $234,000. That's by the interlocal agreement with the county.
Go over to 34.
We, we, it's ours. So little history of the past few years. In 2019, it was the city share, the city share from 2019 has grown. It was 155 in 2020, it was 151 in 165. And as was mentioned, there was a large increase in '22. It went up to $229,000 and then we kind of stabilized at 230. And I'll just clarify that. In 2022, we received new camera equipment, that higher-quality picture, much more fast responding cameras. It's able to capture more than one vehicle in an intersection running the same red light. I believe the previous camera system, every time the traffic signal turned red, it would only be able to capture one of those vehicles. Now, if there's two vehicles following each other and they both go through, it's able to capture both of them. So that was the, due to the technology upgrade was the major difference in the reason that the cost went up. It's hit the wrong button. Leave it up. All right, so we have 13 locations in town that have cameras. Here's the kind of the northern region. Third and Worcester, Third and Dawson, 16th Worcester, 16th and Dawson. And then there's three along Market Street. There's one at the intersection of Wrightsville and Colonial. Then we have two more, one on Carolina Beach and Southern, and then at College Road and 17th Street. Here's kind of a summary of citations issued for FY '23, indicating the scale of what's occurring here. You know, these are, these are the number of vehicles that are being captured entering the intersections in one directional. It's a concern to me. I mean, you know, you want everybody to follow the driving laws. So that's a pretty big number when you think about it. So previously, when I first got into this position, I was kind of curious myself about how was this working? So I contacted NC DOT and I asked them to do a 20-year study at one of the intersections, Market and 23rd Street. In that study, they reviewed every crash report for 10 years prior to the camera to 10 years after the camera to determine, did anything change? If it did, what was it? NC DOT has an entire section up there to just look at crash reports. So it's, they reviewed each crash report. Even if it's an angle crash, it may not have been a red light running angle crash. They go in and they dig in there and say, was this crash caused by a red light runner? So the data that was reported back, the 10 years prior, there were, in that green box, angle crashes, which is the intent of this program is to reduce angle crashes. There were 10 red light running crashes that were a result prior to the camera. And then after, there were seven. So a 30% reduction in crashes after the camera. And then in the opposite direction, which is not even enforced, but for every approach to the intersection, we install signs warning drivers that this intersection is photo enforced. Only one direction's being enforced, but we're required to put signs on every direction. Even the opposite direction that does not have the camera showed a reduction in angle crashes. Based on the, you know, the comments from June 20th, talking about, you know, an update to what's happening now or how do we know it's working? I reached back out to NC DOT. So we are allowed to, we can relocate these cameras at a cost. There's, you know, it's expensive equipment. They have to send out staff to do all the installation. But in the past few years, I identified three cameras that had been relocated. So I thought those would be identified three cameras that had been relocated, so I thought those would be good locations to measure additions and removals, if that makes sense. So if we added a camera, what happened three years prior and what happened three years after? But if we removed a camera, what happened three years with the camera and then what happened three years after we removed the camera? So Market and Twenty-third Street was one of those locations. It was installed in two thousand and ten. So they looked at two thousand and seven to two thousand and ten crashes and compared those two. After the camera was installed, it showed that the frontal crashes decreased in the enforced direction. And again, this is specific to people that entered the intersection on red, red light running crashes. Unfortunately, the, you know, the total frontal crashes at the intersection increased slightly. But what needs to be kind of scaled here is we're talking about a very small sample size. It's, it's, I think the total frontal crash increase went from four to six. So in, in the six year period, so.
This is from, was that varying, varying to my sample and breaks to the first part?
Frontal crashes are the angle crashes that we're most, most interested in. It's if somebody turns left in front of somebody going straight, that would be classified as a frontal crash.
Looking at far, if it's increased, what kind of that?
It would be angle crashes. It would be left turn crashes. It would, if somebody turns.
So we need that other chart up there where it said, you know, one angle crashes were up down thirty, the rear ends were up twenty-seven.
Correct.
Trade off, because you're just saying that one's more dangerous. Because I mean, we just got the same accidents. It's just one's worse.
Not every accident's the same as, I guess, is in the, in the mind of the program. Is that angle crashes generally result in more fatal and more severe crashes, so. Moving on to the next intersection, so the intersection of Market and New Center was also added in two thousand and ten. Three years prior compared to three years after the addition of the, the camera. You know, frontal crashes increased, again, a very low sample. It went from four to six, four before the camera to six after. But the total frontal crashes at the intersection went down and the total angle crashes at the intersection went down. The last camera that was added in two thousand and fifteen, we placed a camera for northbound Third Street at Dawson Street. This one showed, had promising results with a little bit more data to go behind it. The frontal crashes decreased in the, in the northbound direction. It went from twenty-seven to twenty-one. So that was a, a market, mark decrease. And also the entire intersection frontal crashes went down. Looking at the two locations where they were removed showed increases in all of these red light running crashes. Market and Eastwood, we had a camera that was removed in two thousand and ten. Where all of, you know, the frontal crashes increased and angle crashes increased. And again, at Market and Wooster and Fifth Avenue, we removed a camera in two thousand and ten. And angle, or the frontal crashes increased there as well. I have all that, you know, NC DOT provided me with, you know, their huge reports on this. You know, again, they, they look at every, every crash report and, and look at the details. Talking about some of the other supplemental benefits of this camera system is WPD has access to the video that's recorded, the pictures in the video that's recorded in this system. And I just did a, a quick pull to prepare this presentation. And since two thousand, or since we got these new cameras with PD access, eight hundred and forty-three video pulls have been requested. I know the Sting Center, you know, I used to get those requests at my desk. You know, hey, do you have the video from such and such? Well, with this new system, it gives them access to the exact same data that I can look at. So they use it for all of their, you know, any investigation, hit and run. If they're looking for a vehicle, they can pull the video. So that's been a, a benefit to me and I think to them, just the immediacy of the, of the data. There's video clips that are sent to each person that receives a citation. So if they're uncertain of, are you sure I really ran that? You know, they can go online, they can enter the citation, they can watch their vehicle perform whatever movement was performed. There's the, the appeal hearing process. The benefit of that is, you know, we get to talk face to face with these folks that are usually disgruntled that they've received a citation. But it gives us a chance to get in there and educate them a little bit about what, what the program's for, the benefits. About, I would say fifty percent of the citations are right turns on that where people just don't stop. And it's not a slow roll. It's just a, it's like, I want to get in front of these cars that are coming at me from the west. So frequently following too closely or if the roads are wet or the weather's poor, just not driving to the conditions. So moving on to something that will affect the Wilmington system, if it should happen, is there's a bill in the House or in the legislation right now that will change the time, I'm going to call it the time into red. So with a signal, when a signal turns red, another direction is not green immediately. There's a period of what they call all red, where every direction's red. It's to allow anybody that entered the intersection legally to clear through the intersection legally before it changes green to any other direction. So there's a bill in the legislation to change. Currently, we start issuing citations at zero point two seconds into red. It's illegal to enter the intersection at point zero zero. But we give a point two second grace period for drivers to say, look, you know, you didn't try hard enough to stop, you know. The bill that's in legislation wants to change that to the full red clearance interval. So before any, they want to wait until any other direction has green before any citations are issued. So that being what it, you know, it is what it is. So just out of curiosity, I reached out to our vendor. And I said, and I picked our high, our six highest citation locations. And I said, what would this have done to the city of Wilmington system? Had we been, been using the full red interval? And based on the information they gave me, it would have reduced the number of citations issued by fifty percent.
Wow.
So it's a catch to that, because while that would reduce the amount of cost that, that fifty percent reduction in cost, the concern from my perspective is that we have fifty percent of cars running the red after it's been red for a long time. So there's still that safety, that safety concern. That ends my presentation. I'm open to any questions at this point.
There's, uh, back the group seventeen dollars and whatever in the whole, on a citation, is that governed, that rate is governed by the General Assembly?
Ninety percent, ninety percent is.
But not the amount that we set at fifty dollars.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
Correct.
But it's.
You can't set that hour to become more of a turn.
Then why don't, I mean, if, when we first put this in, we were going to make a million dollars a year. And then we found out we had to give it, or we were forced to give it to the school board. And, but to, to, to have it, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it. I would never want to see it go away, but it ought to be at least a wash.
You still got to give ninety percent of schools.
I understand, but I understand that, but can't we raise a rate? I mean, I, I understand that your percentage would climb i- as you did, but I mean, there's got to be a way to capture our.
To get to a hundred percent of cost recovery, it takes about two hundred and thirty dollars per citation. Ninety goes to the school, ten percent will cover our costs because we're paying twenty-two dollars per citation to the vendor. But you don't have to necessarily do a hundred percent. There could be some amount to cover more costs.
I know there's a guy or maybe more than one person that's been going to sue us and, and raise hell with us for years and years about we juggle the timing of the lights, which we know that's not true. But it looks like he's got a stronger voice in legislature than we do.
So that two hundred thousand, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, the cost to the city, the net, the net loss for this program, is that all encompassing? That's the net cost? Does that include staffing and any operational expenses to run the program?
That's the, it does not. That's the, that's the check we write, you know.
Do we have, do we have any indication of what the total cost to the city is to implement this program?
I, I can't imagine that we track time on it.
We have dedicated employees to this program?
No, because the contractor has a dedicated employee that accepts. But when there's an appeal or there's a complaint, that does, that, that time is not tracked.
That's city staff.
That's city staff and that time is not tracked.
What percentages tickets just get paid?
I think, um, pulled that work. Anywhere between, I think since two thousand and nineteen, it was sixty-six percent. Two thousand and twenty, it dropped to sixty-four and it's been dropping. It's at about last, the full, last full year was around sixty percent.
Would re, would capturing more tickets getting paid help us with this number? I mean, or it's just every time a citation goes out, that's to be a cost to us?
Every time it's paid.
Every paid citation costs.
Can we do better if somebody had to pay their ticket?
Unfortunately.
I'll say.
What the county is using.
I just goes into their general fund, their, their, their school general fund.
We already asked that question. What are they doing? We have any input? Right, don't shut the door.
I think the number one goal of government at any level is safety. That, that, that's our number one responsibility is safety. And this is just an additional way to enhance community safety. And everything costs money.
Well, I'm going to say some, what do we, uh, usually write one or two in the state is one of the worst places for crashes.
I know we got better. We got down to eight a couple of years ago, but I think we've gone up a little.
So you got a strategic plan here, the focus, focus there is of safety, vehicular safety. You got a chief back there telling you you got fifty officers down. And you're paying about eighteen thousand dollars per intersection for the safety. And you got, and you're showing me backs and showing me the decrease in car crashes. And then you remove the camera and you got an increase. I mean, it comes down to public safety in my perspective, but if you're going to pay that kind of money, two hundred and thirty thousand for that, to save somebody's life, can imagine my mother going through the intersection, somebody going through the intersection, getting hurt bad or getting killed. And unfortunately, we have some pretty bad drivers, from what I understand. This community, I keep hearing it over and over, how bad our drivers are. So why wouldn't we do that? That's one thing. And it's just, it's, to me, it's a drop in the bucket for the safety part of it and it's, and it is for what we say.
The, 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 I, I think the biggest problem is not so much bad drivers, I think it's impatient drivers. Because they, 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 they sat through a cycle or two and they're going to push it. And then there are people, my grandson just ran through a red light, distracted, had a friend in his car, probably, God knows what they were talking about or doing, radio or texting. And he got T-bones, his fault. And, uh, just inexperienced driver, but impatience. I see people at the old end of South College, after that turn light has turned red, four or five more cars go right through it. It's, it's, I mean, it's insanity. The, uh, people that don't pay is, is, I mean, I know it's a civil, it's not criminal, it's a civil citation. Is there any recourse on those? I mean, you can't just ignore that. So look, they are.
I would lean on finances.
We, we put the only civil remedy would be, you know, just law court or something. Anything that we would put into recovery and civil fund would then turn over essentially to the school board. So if you pay more money to give it away, to give it back to somebody else.
Something else doesn't make sense.
How's that financing work? As hard as it was embedded with our, like, hand over. They pay by the school system.
No, we, 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 we pay for a certain number of SROs and then the sheriff actually oversees the program.
So you, couldn't you, there's no way to direct, say, here's, these are our funds coming from the city. We want to use that to pay our SROs.
They have.
Because it's in the school.
So for them, at least. That, that, it is up to the school system how they use this funding.
So we can't say, hey, we're going to get rid of this program unless you pay our SROs.
Yes, sir. We, we, we had actually thought one time about, you know, you ought to use this for safety equipment at schools or you ought to use it for something else and we were reluctant. But I, yes, sir.
Is this the only time, are we going to talk about traffic anymore? I, I do want to chime in, but it's not about the red light, but it's about the need for, or the potential for us to look at a crosswalk or a signal at Tenth and Princess.
If you'll hold that for just a few minutes, make sure we got all the questions on this.
Well, that, that was my question. Are we going to talk traffic anymore or not?
Well, I just wanted, I just wanted to say, I, I, again, I have to, I have to commend the county. Because it only took one time of me going to the finance officer over there and saying, you're getting, you're getting a big, and at this time, at that time, it was about three quarters of a million dollars. And she said that, the lady at the time said, yeah, sure, no problem. Or budget, actually, it was budget person. And they came up with this agreement. We've increased it, I think, once or twice. But anyway, I, I just, I want to say that we may not be able to direct how the, the county school system uses it, but we have been very fortunate in having a partnership with the county. Are there any other questions about? Councilman Spears, you're, you're, you, you, a crosswalk at Tenth and what?
I mean, we, we, we got some new activity going on over there. And I know a couple of years ago, the constituents in that neighborhood were concerned. And so we, there, there's a new brewery there. The soda pop district is locked in well now. And so we may need to focus, get ahead of that. It's not really getting ahead of it, but we, we can do a better job of trying to allocate some resources over there.
Yes, sir. We will take, we will, there's a flashing, we will take a look at that. Yes, sir.
All right. Thanks.
What we wanted to do today was to get an opportunity in front of you and talk to you about where we were with the transition of this building. We've made some significant strides over the course of the last six days in terms of getting folks in here. We've gotten what everybody would term probably the low hanging fruit in terms of getting folks in here from here on out. It's going to be going to be retrofitting portions of the building either for leases or for our own occupancy. And so I've asked Chad to give us an update on where we are with it and let you know what our schedule was going forward.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Prokem, Member of that City Council. I would like to introduce to you, before we get started, a couple of people. You may have seen them. You may have actually met them before, but I wanted to introduce you, Daryl McCall, who's the Building Superintendent, as well as probably a familiar face to some of you, Marion Doherty, who is Operations Manager for the building. Other staff members are actually out doing their job in the building. Fitness Gore up front, which all of you have seen her smiling face. And then also Margaret Isabel, who came from Parks and Rec as well. And then two maintenance employees, Roy Anderson and Adam Kirkley, who were formerly employed by PPD. They have done an excellent job getting us off the ground and getting us operational in this building.
Marion's glad to have somebody in the building. She was here when she was here about, just about by herself.
So as Tony mentioned, we have obviously started the process of moving into the building. What you see up here is a breakdown of the floors that we are, have staff on. We are fully occupying twelve, the, the, the twelfth floor, tenth floor. We are fully occupying twelve, uh, the, the, the twelfth floor, tenth floor, and eleventh floor, portions of the first floor. Um, and currently, the city clerk's office is temporarily occupying a space on the seventh floor until the third floor spaces is ready. But the, again, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth floor is fully occupied. Uh, we moved into the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth floor, completing the, the, uh, eleventh floor move on November ninth, only related to, expense only related to moving expenses and cubicle, uh, removal or reconfiguration, uh, which is, uh, is a heavy lift, but something that, that we were able to do to save money. An update on Thermo Fisher, as, as all of you know, Thermo Fisher did a leaseback when they sold the property to us. They are leasing the fifth and sixth floor. They have fully moved off of the eleventh floor, thereby allowing us to move on the eleventh floor. Those folks that were on the eleventh are now occupying the sixth, and as of yesterday, I haven't heard a definitive word. Uh, Thermo Fisher provided us with an update, they anticipated getting their conditional CO for the fifth floor actually today. Um, they do have until the end of the month to vacate the third floor, as well as their, um, portions of the first floor that they're occupying with their copy center. Those people will be moved, uh, to the fifth floor by the end of the month. Um, required upfits, uh, reduced scope. Right now, what we're anticipating is a, a, a potential scenario where the upfits we're going to have to do to this building to get fully, full occupancy for our staff are going to be confined to the first floor and the third floor, and I'll give you more information about that specifically in, in a little bit. Uh, third floor update, because of some funding factors related to, uh, DOT contributing costs uh, to our outfit and, and relocation, we've made the decision that traffic engineering will be deferred until twenty twenty-eight. Uh, we will, we will demise the space that they're going to occupy, um, on the third floor. We won't, it'll, it'll be basically a shell for them to be, uh, moved in at a later date. Third floor will also include a reservation or allocation of space for the three-one-one center, uh, that would be added at a, a later date in terms of staffing. One change, uh, that we wanted to bring to your attention, we have decided that we would, uh, plan to move staff to the second floor. Uh, there's a lot of factors that went into this decision. One of those main factors was we, we realized, uh, early on, a couple of things, uh, that we were always going to have a large presence on the second floor for, for several reasons. A lot of the IT core and quote unquote brains of the building either terminates in the bit, in, in the second floor or originates in, in the second floor. Um, that core, that IT core, combined with the floor core, the bathrooms, the elevator base, make up about sixty percent of the gross floor area for that floor. Um, one other challenge that we realized in working with, with not only LS three P, but also Cape Fear Commercial, is how are we going to segregate that space? Uh, IT space, uh, highly protected, a lot of sensitive information. It was going to be very difficult to have mixed tenancy on, on that, on that floor, meaning protecting our infrastructure and our space, but also allowing for a private tenant to occupy that space. Um, so by occupying that second floor, meaning putting IT staff actually on that floor, the full department, we eliminate that conflict. We also, one thing we also realized was the first floor was originally going to occupy planning department, housing, community services, as well as the fire marshal's office. We could have done that. We could have put them all on the first floor, but that would have put everybody in the, i- i- in every nook and cranny and corner of that floor and allowed for no growth factor for those departments, which is, you can imagine, all those departments, um, can experience growth almost annually. Um, several things are accomplished by this. By moving IT, housing and neighborhood services to the second floor, the second floor essentially becomes the same thing that the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth were for us. That benefit is turnkey, minus a little bit of, um, cubicle work that we, uh, are going to start. Um, the, the contemplation of in the next couple of weeks, those spaces are turnkey for the staff, uh, the staff members that would be going to that floor. Um, and there's a, a large number of folks that we could get on that second floor, and there's also benefit in the sense that we would eliminate considerable outfit cost that if we don't put those, those particularly IT on that second floor, we're going to incur, um, related to putting those place, putting those departments, that department on another floor, for example, the IT help desk. The second floor has a turnkey-ready IT help desk, the roll-up door that we could move in tomorrow and operate, serve our, our staff. What we also do is we eliminate the third floor outfit that we would incur for putting IT on that third floor. Um, if you look at, I can show you on, on the original plans devised by LS three P, the third floor space that was, um, allocated for IT was, was, um, well, I'll say, it, it was not, was not turnkey. It was going to be almost a wholesale gut and recreation of an IT help desk. Um, certain spaces for workshops, um, certain areas that more customize the needs of that part. That's kind of a safe way to say it. Um, second floor checks that box to put, put those folks on that floor and make them operational. One thing we also learned through this process of working with Cape Fear Commercial is freeing up by putting, um, housing and neighborhood services on the second floor will free up very valuable and highly desirable first floor leasable space. The current fire marshal's office and the space on the north side of, of the main elevator bay, those would become leasable space. Um, and to show you kind of where that market is in, in terms of what highly desirable and valuable is, um, we've quoted that fire marshal's space at thirty-six and a half dollars a square foot, and the, the tenant, um, didn't bat an eye at that price because of how much they, they want that space.
That's third floor?
That's first floor. The status of the LS three P design upfits, we've completed all the departmental meetings, um, and we've in- included, uh, all the departments that have already relocated, meaning everybody that's already in the building has had the opportunity to meet with Charles and Emily with LS three P and identify, um, some things in the future that they would like to see, but not necessarily day one or phase one outfit improvements. We've also identified access control concerns, uh, for floors one through twelve. The five areas that the, uh, that LS three are focusing on, LS three P are focusing on, first and foremost, are the council chambers and conference space. Uh, a lot of thought and effort is going into that area, including ADA upfits, functionality of the space, AT, uh, AV and IT upgrades, as well as possible, uh, upgrades to the furnishings, fixtures, and equipment that make that space up. If you'll notice down there, the, for example, the tables and chairs. The tables are not, they don't have wheels on them, they're not break, they don't break down. The chairs are, are, um, aren't stackable, taking a lot of square footage and, and very expensive, uh, square footage to, to basically store chairs. So we're looking at all those things and running cost benefit on whether it's better, makes better sense to replace them or demise space to store. They're also looking at the third floor redesigned. Um, again, the, uh, third floor will, will occupy, be occupied by the city clerk's office, as well as the PD. Uh, LS three P's met with the city clerk's office, as well as, uh, Chief Williams and his staff, and come up with a plan for what that space would look like. Here's a rough schedule, very rough, of what, um, we anticipate the full occupancy timeline to look like. Uh, we've completed or will complete the, the needs assessment by the end of this month. Moving on to the preliminary designs for, uh, floors one, three, and the overall building plan. And I won't go through and read all of you can, you can all read that. If you've got any questions, feel free. Um, changing plans for remaining departments. The first floor, again, we, once we got into it with Charles and Emily with LS three P, we realized that that space was, um, operationally too small, the first floor space for the departments that we had allocated in there. Um, planning would still occupy the northwest side of that first floor. Um, Linda and Brian and myself have, have met several times. There is actually a possibility that we can move, uh, the planning staff into that space as it exists, and the customer service center, once it's constructed, we can reconfigure that existing space to, to move a few of those staff members into that, that newly created customer service center. Uh, we're working through the, the details of, of that possible plan where we could go ahead and move the planning department sooner rather than later in, into the first floor. Again, under this new, uh, new plan, we would occupy the second floor. One important thing to point out, uh, and any specific questions, I defer to, to Chief Williams about this, is the deferred cost that we're going to realize related to housing and relocating certain components of the Southeast Command Center into this building and, uh, other existing, uh, city facilities. Um, under the plan to close the existing Southeast Command Center, the patrol division, Southeast Patrol Division would be relocated to Novant Health. Um, special operations that's currently at Southeast Command would be relocated in, at two twelve Operations Center Drive. Uh, and then you can see this, I'll put notes there, no outfit costs, it's existing city-owned property with no rent associated. Then the narcotics division would be relocated, uh, to the third floor as well as the sting center, um, that we would, uh, develop and demise space for under the plans and, uh, upfits created by LS three P. Um, also, there's plan to, to lease space in northern New Henry County um, for the residual items and, and, and divisions and, and equipment that's currently at the Southeast Command Center would be relocated to the northern, uh, portions of the county. The benefit, the deferred cost, uh, of this alternative plan would, would basically result in fifteen to eighteen million dollars of savings for the city.
That's awesome.
Breakdown of the numbers of actual personnel and percentages of our total, uh, plan to, to relocate employees to date. Um, we've moved fifty-six percent of the total anticipated staff into this building. Um, by the, by the end of the year, and this does not include, um, the plan possibly to move planning to the first floor. We could add another eighty employees if we fully occupy the second floor with IT and housing and community services by the end of the year. That would, that eighty employees would bump our total occupancy up to around eighty-one percent of our, our total, uh, city occupancy. Once we, um, complete the upfits to the third floor, that would, the remaining fifty-nine employees would bring us, uh, to a hundred percent occupancy with a total of three hundred and seventeen employees, as currently budgeted, um, occupying this building in our, in the city's floors.
So now, because it looks like, so one, they'll release someone on, someone on four, seven, eight, nine? Right.
We've got five and six leased.
No, just what was left.
One, right, seven, eight, nine. Yes, sir.
Four, four, four.
Yeah.
Four.
The percentage of one, all part?
Um, about twelve thousand square feet on, on the first floor. It's a sixty thousand square foot floor gross. Um, but the, the net difference, it, w- once you factor in the second floor. It's about a four thousand square foot difference between not occupying the first and leasing the second versus the, what, what our plan is.
I want to say a couple of things. One is, this, this gives us some opportunity to grow, and that's one reason we brought this building. Um, I've already told deputy, uh, managers, don't come back through this office with a proposable leased property outside of this building, um, because we're buying this building, and that's what we ought to be using it for. Um, the, the second thing is, I, I've got to tell you, uh, it's been a real benefit to have folks in the building. Um, you, you, you hear people talk about, gee, I saw so-and-so, or I got to meet this person. Um, there's, there's just a real benefit to having folks in the building and, and all under one roof and, and talking to one another. And if, if you don't believe that that didn't do something, go to a, a conference one time and realize that you can get more business conducted in the hallway than you can in the meeting rooms. But, uh, I just want to say thank you to council because, uh, this has given us a, an opportunity that I don't think we could have realized, that I don't think we have yet to be able to project what the benefits will be.
Have, um, I don't know what the address is. What's, what's the address of property just across R and S on the corner there?
I think it's, I think it's ten fifteen.
So have, have you, have you all met with, um?
Yes, we've met with Live Nation. We're working on alternatives right now.
Just that egress issue.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we're still working on that. Um, I, I had a very simple plan that, that seems to be turning into something a little more difficult. I'm trying to get that back on course. Yeah, it is, and I agree, and, and especially with that wide shoulder.
And prizes have been completed, have they not?
Yes, they have.
Update on surplus properties. Um, see there where they are in the various phases. Um, Aubrey, Aubrey Parsley's done an excellent job. Evan's work on getting, um, three of these, almost to the finish line, fingers crossed, uh, which will yield about one point nine million dollars. Um, all the ones, uh, to, to the, on the left side of that slide have had interest. We've had showings, um, multiple showings on some of them. Um, and, and they're working their way hopefully through the process to the right of that graph there, so, uh, more to come on that.
All three projects just around one point nine.
Yes.
Willard is part, right?
Yes, the old fire station slash old parts and wreck building. Um, the, the handouts you had, just explained those to you. They are a breakdown of the, the currently occupied floors, ten, eleven, and twelve, and where the, the departments that occupy this space, and lo- level two reflects what the, the plan would be to occupy the second floor.
Mr. Mayor, that's all we've got for you. Anybody else?
Somebody needs to take a picture. This is for a special meeting. Margaret won't be here after this. Neil will be here. I think some of this is kind of a, kind of a story.
Dave, you got a picture? Everybody look at Dylan. Thank you, Dave. Thank you very much. Great job. Very appreciated.